Ladies and gentlemen, the town clerk advises me that we have a forum. And I call to order, that is order, the second session of the 2016 annual town meeting. Please take your seats. Before we start, I want to say a few things about the handheld devices. The first is that unfortunately, the visual system up here requires, in order to be brought back to 100 percent, some equipment that nobody in the town or the school seems to have in stock, so we have to order it and it won't be here until Tuesday. If the only upside to our going over to a third session will be that this will be, the display will be a lot clearer. In any event, I'm not predicting that, by the way. If you all mind your Ps and Qs, we may get through the rest of the warrant this evening. I want to review very briefly the -- could we have quiet, please, Ms. Gilman? Very briefly, the procedures if your vote has been incorrectly recorded, or if your vote has not been recorded, notwithstanding your attempt to vote. If that, if you realize that immediately after the vote tally is announced, you can stand up and we will record your vote properly and change the tally. If you miss that opportunity and we've gone on to the next item of business, then please notify the town clerk of the error, and the town clerk will make sure that your vote is properly recorded, and I will announce a new tally in due course. As long as I can announce a revised result of an electronic vote before we dissolve town meeting, then your vote will be, a changed vote will be properly recorded. So that the gentleman who came up to me after the Tuesday session and wanted to have his vote recorded, and I gave him short shrift, should please come up and see the town clerk, and his vote on the electronic vote will be recorded properly, and I will announce a new tally. But there won't be any changes after we have dissolved, that is after town meeting concludes. And just to review, I'm, I think probably 90 percent of the, of the time that one's vote is not recorded is because the wrong buttons have been used. Your handheld device has three, has a row of buttons up on the top that are marked with dashes. Please ignore those. The buttons that you push are the buttons with the numbers one, two, and three. And there's no point in repeatedly pushing your button. If you push it once and in about three seconds, this red box will light up with three parallel bars, meaning that your vote has been properly recorded by the system. So press once, watch the red box in the upper right-hand corner of your display, and that's all you need to do. And if that happens, and you still aren't properly recorded, then we've got a real problem. Okay. Last session, I announced that we would start off with the school budget. That I was told immediately after the, or just a little while after the session adjourned, that both the chair of the school committee and the acting superintendent would be attending steps to success recognition ceremony and would be unable to be here until eight o'clock. So we're going to proceed with the articles that we set up to be heard first thing on Thursday, and when the acting superintendent and the school committee chair get here, we will conclude whatever article we're discussing at that point and go back to the budget, do the school department presentation and budget, and the balance of the budget, and then continue where we left off. So, the first article before us is Article 17. The motion under Article 17 is found on page two of the Green Supplement, moved by Mr. Friedman, seconded by Ms. Jonas, that the town adopt a resolution, in the words of the resolution on the green sheets, going over to the top of page three, Mr. Friedman. I've given Mr. Friedman seven minutes.
Harry Friedman, Precinct 12, petitioner for Article 17. The town has begun to roll out a combination pay-as-you-throw and automation program for trash pickup which is scheduled to start next spring. Pay-as-you-throw can be instituted without mechanized or automated pickup, such as by simply using special bags. However, the town has chosen to conjoin the two. Automated pickup will make use of toter cards similar to the ones now used for recycling. And if I could have the first picture? These are the toter cards that the town will be offering. Four sizes will be offered to residents, each size costing a different price. Next picture, please. This is your typical Brookline family. Next, please. This is your typical Brookline home. Toters work well in this vision of a town, where everyone has a garage in which to store them, and a driveway down which one can easily roll them. However, that is not my picture of Brookline, and is certainly not a picture of all of Brookline. My street, for example, consists of attached row houses. We have no garages. We have no driveways. We have no side yards. We have no accessible backyards. We have limited basement storage accessed by either interior or exterior stairs. This results in one of two things. Some people store their toters in the front yard, which results in the streetscape looking like an eyesore. Next picture, please. This is the corner of Winthrop and Addington, and you may be able to see the toters being stored by the steps because there's no place else to put them. Alternatively, we struggle to get the toters in and out of basements. Next picture, please. This is me. This is in front of my basement door. I am five foot seven. The door is considerably shorter. Next, please. This is me entering my basement, which is where I need to go to access my toters. Next, please. This is me in my basement, where we have three toters because there are three households in my building. You will also see next to me a very small, lightweight, plastic garbage can. That is what we currently use for garbage. Next, please. This is me getting the toter out of the basement, because this is what I have to do. And I think that's it. Is there a next one? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Ms. --
These toters are not light. My building for recycling uses the 35-gallon toters. They are 25 pounds empty. Even the 18-gallon toters that the town is going to offer for garbage pickup, which are the smallest ones, are 22 pounds empty. They are unwieldy, and unlike the plastic garbage can that you saw in the picture, they cannot be stacked or nested for storage purposes. Each toter takes up its own floor space. Toters will make disposing of one's trash a much larger ordeal than it needs to be for many of us. We have heard that automated pickup using toters works very well in the city of Newton. However, our housing stock is not the same as Newton's. Newton is primarily a town of single-family homes with driveways and garages. Perhaps a better comparison would be to Boston or Cambridge, both urban areas with a wide variety of housing stock. Boston allows trash to be deposited in thick plastic bags, 32 gallons or less, placed on the curb, or lighter bags placed in one's own garbage can. Cambridge allows the same. Why is Brookline planning on making things so difficult? Well, one reason is efficiency. Through attrition, we will lose three positions in the DPW because the trucks that will be using automated for the toters, which are automated, will only need a one-person crew instead of two. Thus, three positions, each paying approximately $43,000 a year plus benefits, will be eliminated through attrition. However, some of this savings is certainly going to have to go to the additional administrative cost to the town in keeping track of which households have which toters, if any, and sending out bills with the appropriate amount to be billed, and keeping track when people trade one toter for a larger or smaller one. Last night was trash night on Claflin Road where I live. At 11:30, as I was about to put out my trash, I said, "No, I have better use for this." This is a week's worth of trash for me. That I should have to schlep a 22-pound toter out of my basement so that I can put this in it once a week, I posit, is not efficiency. It is inefficiency, and it is absurd. I think the fundamental question here is how much can the town demand of its residents when it supplies some municipal services? I have been in town meeting for 15 years. I have heard residents and town meeting members complain about parking, parking meters, snow removal, or lack thereof, zoning issues, and school-related issues. I have never heard anyone complain that the system of trash pickup does not work, or that we need toters to make it work. This is a solution in search of a problem. When you start out--
Now, Mr. Friedman, this is all very entertaining, but you've had your seven minutes, and if you can wrap up fairly quickly, we'd appreciate it.
I'm asking that, I'm asking for exemptions, which is what Article 17 calls for, which would let those of us who cannot accommodate the toters use the overflow bags that the town is providing, and it would still be pay-as-you-throw because we'd be paying for the bags. Two nights ago, Michael Berstein went up to the mics and noted that on several issues, the voice of town meeting was not being heard. We are the institutional voice of the people of Brookline. Make them hear you. Please vote in favor of the Warren article.
Thank you, Ms. Jonas. Ms. Granoff, would you please come forward and sit in the front row?
I'm not going to be as entertaining. Alisa Jonas, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee in support of the amended version of Article 17 and the Second Supplement. There was a lot of activity in between the time of the first submission of the Warren article and the Second Supplement. And garbage is such a ripe topic, I wanted to do a bunch of tons in honor of Stanley Spiegel, but I couldn't pull it off, so I'm just going to be straight. So as Harry Friedman mentioned, the town administration has already taken preliminary steps to mechanize solid waste disposal with the intent of achieving cost savings by reducing the number of workers needed for garbage trucks. To provide an incentive to recycle more, the proposed system also has four different variable-sized toter options: a 96-gallon, a 65-gallon, 35, and an 18-gallon, with households charged higher annual fees for larger-sized toters. And it is thanks to the petitioner's submission of this Warren article, which has highlighted the concerns about toter size and weight, that the 18-gallon option has been included as one of the options. A household's waste that doesn't fit into the toter will have to be placed in town issued bags at a price of $3 per bag, and this is an approach that aligns more closely with what is generally viewed as pay-as-you-throw because the fees are charged based on the actual volume of garbage that is going to be disposed of. This Warren article, if passed, will provide exceptions to the use of toters for households for whom the use of toters causes an undue burden because of their weight and bulk. Toters are integral to the mechanized system of trash pickup, but they are not relevant to pay-as-you-throw. In fact, under the current exemption system that's being proposed, households under the exemption system will have the greatest incentive to recycle because they have what really is pay-as-you-throw, since they will be charged $3 for each bag of solid waste disposed of. So if there's any of you out there who thought we want to keep pay-as-you-throw to the extent possible, the exception system only furthers the ability for further recycling. So I should note that I have grown very fond of my toter for recycling. Its solidity and its weight has meant that it doesn't get tipped over by the wind, and I don't have my garbage scattered throughout the street. The weight of the lid is sufficiently heavy and solid that the raccoons can't open it up and crawl inside. The heavy-duty material has meant that there's no cracks in my toters the way they pop up in my garbage cans, and there are no way, my toter is completely as unbroken as it was when I first got it. But it's exactly this, these characteristics of weight and bulk that are problematic for some of our fellow Brookline residents. I live in a single-family house with a side yard and a driveway, and I can easily store my toter, and I can relatively easily drag the toter with its contents to the curb. Other town residents who live in apartments may have no side yards or driveways for storage and have difficulties dealing with these toters. Some residents, as Harry Friedman has shown us, have storage only in the basement.
You have one minute.
While for others, sole storage space is in their apartments, and some of these buildings don't even have elevators. Other residents have better storage and easier routes to curbside, but nonetheless may be physically unable to maneuver the toters. The Advisory Committee heard several of these residents testify regarding their challenges in dealing with their recycling toters. Adding additional toters would make garbage disposal that much more challenging for them, and would also be logical to assume that increasingly toters will simply be left in front of buildings. The filing of this Warren article and the testimony that it elicited has given the town this opportunity to address these issues prior to implementation of the program. So the AC believes, after hearing the testimony, oh, so, the AC believes after hearing testimony from town residents that the problems with use of toters for some residents are substantial enough that an exception system should be in place. So, by a vote of 14 in favor, two opposed, the Advisory Committee urges town meeting members to recycle any remnants of concern about this Warren article and reuse it for some other Warren article later, and support Article 17 as provided for in the Second Supplement.
So I need to point out that whatever you do with this motion before you is not going to directly affect the system. It is the will of town meeting and presumably the Board of Selectmen, which determines the pay-as-you-throw elements of that system, will listen to town meeting, and perhaps Mr. Waschinski can tell us how hard they'll listen. You're next. And while he's coming to the microphone, the vote under item 41 of Article 8, the gentleman has corrected his vote, and the final vote was 197 in favor, 17 opposed, and six abstentions. Mr. Waschinski.
Hi, Neil Waschinski for the Board of Selectmen. There's been a lot of concern about the town's desire to move to a hybrid pay-as-you-throw trash system, which would be more automated than our current system. I hope I can alleviate some of those concerns tonight. Commissioner Papasturgen and his team have come up with a plan for a hybrid pay-as-you-throw system that gives residents a lot of flexibility. It has the option of four different-sized trash toters, as you've heard, including the small 18-gallon size for those with limited space or for whom maneuvering a larger toter would be difficult. Residents would be able to buy specially-marked garbage bags for overflow trash that doesn't fit into the toter. In addition, for those who can show hardship, there will be an option of using only the specially-marked bags. So why are we interested in making this move? Over the years, there have been multiple committees convened to discuss this issue, and each committee has recommended we move to some form of pay-as-you-throw system. Some people have advocated for a total pay-as-you-throw system so people feel the cost of all trash they throw out. We're moving towards a hybrid system. The first reason for the change is to encourage citizens to throw out less solid waste by having some economic consequences for larger trash disposal. The EPA estimates that in 2013, Americans threw out 254 million tons of waste. About a third of that was recycled or composted. The remainder went to some kind of permanent trash holding point, such as a landfill. In the past 50 years, the amount of garbage thrown out per American has nearly doubled. Plastic packaging accounts for a great deal of that increase. Our landfills are getting full. In Brookline, I think many of us are very conscientious recyclers, but our level of recycling, which went up when we introduced recycling toters, has plateaued for the past several years. If we're going to live the green message that we preach, we need to take steps to reduce our solid waste, even if it's somewhat inconvenient or uncomfortable to make the change. The second motive for the change is financial. Commissioner Papasturgen estimates that for every ton of solid waste we move over to recycling, we save $53 a ton. In an effort to reduce personnel costs and keep the override as low as possible, last year's override study committee recommended that the town move to this more automated trash pickup system using toters and automated side loader trucks with a mechanical arm to pick up the toters. Through attrition, as you heard, the plan would provide for the elimination of three trash collection labors for savings of about $180,000. That expected savings has already been worked into the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, 2017 and beyond. A third reason is that the labors who pick up our trash frequently suffer injuries on the job. Injuries will diminish as we move to the more automated system. Mr. Friedman's resolution, as adopted by the Advisory Committee, calls for the town to establish exceptions for the use of toters for those who are going to experience a hardship. The Board of Selectmen will work through a public process to determine exactly what the criteria for exception should be. Commissioner Papasturgen has already recommended to us that there should be some exceptions for those who are physically unable to maneuver the toters, and to some extent for those for whom storage of toters present a serious problem. We're certainly willing to establish such a system. However, you should bear in mind that with the more exceptions we grant, the less savings we'll get from moving to a more automated system, and we may ultimately have to reflect that in the trash fee that people pay. And lastly, the evaluation of exceptions needs to be based on objective criteria. After all, what you may consider unsightly, I may consider pleasing to the eye. Who will be the judge? The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on the Advisory Committee motion.
Mr. Spiegel.
Yes, a quick question, if I may.
Who are you?
Stanley Spiegel, town meeting member from Precinct 2. Is that, that's the protocol, right? I had a question for Mr. Waschinski's presentation. You did mention hardship. Who is going to, if a citizen of the town claims hardship, are you suggesting that some DPW employee will sit in judgment as to whether the hardship is really a hardship or not a hardship? How do you expect that to work out in practice? My own feeling is that it is not the business of the town to judge whether a citizen of the town who claims a hardship has a real hardship or not, but I don't think that's the town's business.
Mr. Waschinski.
That is to be determined and will be part of our public process.
Thank you, Ms. Granoff. And if you could seek to avoid making the points that have already been made, Ms. Granoff, we do appreciate it.
Susan Granoff, Precinct 7, and also a member of the most recent task force established by the town to deal with pay-as-you-throw and automation. What makes Brookline a really good government is our collective commitment to rational decision-making and efficiency. But what makes Brookline a great government is that we never lose sight of the needs of the diverse human beings who make up our community and whose lives are directly impacted by our rational and efficient decisions. The purpose of Warren Article 17 is to mitigate the hardships that implementation of automated trash collection would otherwise impose on certain members of our community, including some of our most vulnerable: seniors, people with disabilities, and others who lack the physical capacity to bring heavy toters up and downstairs, and whose buildings lack storage areas with direct access to the curb. I'm very pleased that the DPW commissioner has recently agreed to implement an exception allowing the use of trash bags for those residents who are physically unable to comply with the needs of automation and who meet the requirements established by the town. Hopefully, actually getting these exceptions won't be so difficult that the people who most need them are unable to get them, or are discouraged from even applying for them. As always, the devil is in the details. Further, as a pedestrian who lives in an area of Brookline with many multiple-unit condos and narrow side streets, I'm concerned that exceptions need to be granted permitting the use of trash bags for residents of multiple-unit buildings without backyards which lack sufficient basement storage areas, so that their only choice for storing the profusion of recycling and trash bins is to store at least some of them in front of their buildings. What will happen during the snowy months when pedestrians, especially those using strollers, shopping carts, wheelchairs, or who need to hold the hands of young children, find already narrow paths blocked by trash and recycling bins? This is probably going to be particularly a problem during trash collection days and the days immediately prior to them. But this could also be a problem if people lack areas to store the bins and therefore must store them in front of their units, as Mr. Friedman described. Hopefully, there will be an exception that will cover this kind of situation. Warren Article 17 makes it clear that we, as a town, believe that its government must be sensitive to the needs of our diverse populations. That's why I support it, and I urge you to do the same.
Ms. Spiegel.
Diana Spiegel, town meeting member, Precinct 2. I have a question for Mr. Papasturgen, and that is, it has been said that there will be savings due to the loss of three members of the DPW because of automation, but what will this mean during the winter months when, I believe many of these people drive snowplows? And have you done an estimate of that?
Andrew Papasturgen, Commissioner of Public Works. These three positions are currently in the sanitation division. They're at the lowest level that we have, the entry-level positions. They do not drive trucks. Most of them, they do not drive tractors. They're mostly in the wintertime hand labors. Right now, we have-- Right now, we have vacancies that are occurring in other divisions of Public Works, so nobody will be losing their jobs, they'll just be transferred. We don't expect any loss of efficiency due to the loss of these positions during the snow.
Thank you. Now, we, we'll take another couple of questions. Dogs, snow, and trash deserve at least ten dollars. Ms. Frawley?
Yes, Virginia Frawley from Precinct Sixteen. Would somebody clearly define hybrid? Because I put out even less solid waste than Harry does, but I fill a container with paper that I read a great deal. So am I going to need two totes? How is this actually going to work? And I therefore would have to pay for two totes.
Mr. Papasturgen?
The definition of a hybrid system as compared to a pure pay-as-you-throw system, which, by example, would be purely plastic bags. You would buy so many plastic bags, there would be no town fee other than what you pay for the bags, and that would cover the cost of both collection and disposal. If you need two bags, three bags, or ten bags to deal with your trash needs, then that's what you would purchase to put out of the curb. We're calling this a hybrid or a modified system because unlike a pure pay-as-you-throw system, we're using automated collection, we're using different-sized carts, and we're also allowing the use of plastic bags for overflow. That's what makes it a hybrid system. I would assume that if you're talking about paper...
I fill a tote every week, easily.
But that's recycling.
Yes.
Yeah. Right now, you can, you can get, well, if you need an additional recycling toter, we'd be happy to get you one. That won't be the case for trash. You will select the size toter that you think fits your needs. There will be a fee for that as compared to the current refuse fee, which is at two hundred dollars a year. The size of the toter will determine what that fee is going forward. The smaller the toter, the less the fee. And then you will be allowed that one container, plus whatever overflow that you choose to buy.
So all the trash is going in together?
No, I'm just, wait a minute.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Hold on, Ms. Frawley. We're not going to have a back-and-forth conversation here.
No, I'm asking you the question.
If you have another question, you can ask it.
Does it go in together?
No.
So that you have one toter?
No, you'll still have two toters. One for recycling and one for trash.
That's what I needed to know.
Thank you. Ms. O'Leary?
Dillis O'Leary, Precinct Five. Could you please stand?
Well, you asked a question.
All right. My question is this. In order to go to this pay-as-you-throw situation, are we going to need a different type of truck?
Yes.
Does that mean that then we hire a contractor, privatize it?
The answer is absolutely not. The whole purpose of me recommending this system from the beginning was because I feel as though we can do a better job with town workers than we can with contractual workers. I went out to bid last year for this system, and we went out to bid for private waste hauling services. And then we benchmarked that compared to what it cost us to do as a town. And we found that it was cheaper for us to continue to do trash collection than it was to compare to the prices that we were getting for contract. I then recommended going to a system like this for several reasons. Number one, it assures us of keeping trash collection services in-house for the foreseeable future, using town workers, where we can control the cost. Yes, we do need some specialized automated equipment, but we will also utilize standard rubbish packages that we have used right along. So this is a win-win, I believe, for everybody in town. We keep the collection in-house. Yeah, we lose a few people, but, you know, we lose people from time to time in the sake of efficiency. I remember when I started in the Public Works Department, we had over three hundred employees in Public Works back prior to Prop. Two and a Half. Today, we have one hundred and sixty-six, and I think we do a better job than what we did with three hundred. So this is a move to be more efficient, more cost-benefit, I believe, in the long run, protect our workers from injury, and to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Bobby Murphy, Precinct Fifteen. I had a question on the proposed amendment with the union, if it was bargained?
Mr. Papasturgen?
It's a change in working conditions?
The amendment calls for the exception system to the use of toters to allow plastic bags. There's no difference using plastic bags from what we currently do now. So we've had conversations with the unit in terms of impact bargaining on the loss of the three positions through the automated collection, and that's really the only thing that we're required to do.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Can I clarify my question, then?
Sure.
So going from two workers on the truck to one was bargained?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
I wonder if you could explain...
Who are you?
I'm sorry. Frank Friedman, Precinct Eight. I wonder if you could explain either with number seventeen or not. There are cases where you have things that are too big to fit in your trash can, but not quite big enough to call for a special hauling, so a broken chair, you know, things of that nature. I wonder how the new system would be affected, who would affect pickup of things like that? Things that would be too big to fit into a trash bag, but not quite big enough that one would usually, under the current system, would have to call for a special pickup?
Yes, under the, under the new system, we would consider those types of items a bulky pickup. We'd still collect it free of charge, but it would require you to call, just like you would if you had a couch or a mattress or anything else like that. Our charge going forward from all the moderators committees has been to continue the free pickup of yard waste and the free pickup of bulky waste without charge, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll have one more question, and then go to a vote. Ma'am?
Virginia Smith, Precinct Four, question of Andy Papasturgen. I am a big supporter of pay-as-you-throw. I was on the moderator's committee from two thousand ten, I believe, to two thousand twelve. I actually went on Harry's trash tour last Sunday and spent an hour speaking with him. And I will say that he has a basement door that is four feet high. And Harry has told me that he has cracked his head numerous times, and there may be proof of that.[1037.83][1037.83](Laughter). But I wanted to ask Andy, this seems to be an extreme example, because it is quite dangerous. Would you think that that would be an exemption? Can you ease Harry's mind that this rather dangerous situation would be an exemption, and he could use a plastic bag?
We have taken this proposal through many different iterations over the past several years. You know, we've gone from recommending a sixty-five-gallon toter to recommending a single thirty-five-gallon toter, and we've now, through listening to the public, have come up with a system that recommends the flexibility of four different-sized toters at four different prices. You know, and the overflow bags. I think that's as good a system that you can get. It's probably a model that exists in very few places across this country, and I feel confident going forward that we can make that work. I am in favor of this warrant article that offers some sort of a system for exceptions. I'm not going to stand here, though, and tell you exactly what I think those exceptions may be. I think we're going to have to put a system in place that allows folks to apply for the exception, based on criteria that has yet to be determined through public hearing with the Board of Selectmen. And we will do our due diligence when the time comes and go out and look at those to determine what meets an exception and what doesn't, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on page two, we're going to a vote, Ms. Ames, as I announced a little while ago. On the motion in the middle of page two of the green supplement, those in favor, please say aye.
Electronic vote?
Electronic vote. It's called for electronic vote. If there are thirty-five Town Meeting Members who support an electronic vote, we'll have one. I think you're going to find this is pretty much unanimous, Mr. Frawley, but, and there are not thirty-five Town Meeting Members, so we'll have a voice vote. Murphy? This is a great example of wordsmithing until the sun has already gone down. I have before me, what I'm told, is the final, final version of this motion, and it's on a yellow supplement, which was passed out at the checkers tables this evening. On Tuesday, I beg your pardon. So it was passed out in plenty of time to be considered this evening. It's the advisory committee's supplemental recommendation on this yellow sheet, and the motion is much the same as the one on the green sheet, but there are some changes in wording that if anyone was really curious about them, might entertain a question of that effect. Seeing none, and seeing that we have not thirty-five people supporting a, all right.
Do we have a count?
Yeah, Ms. LaPlante, we've had a request for an electronic vote. If thirty-five people want to vote, want to take an electronic vote, then we'll have one. Please stand if you want an electronic vote. And there are thirty-five, so we will have an electronic vote. This is Article seventeen, main motion. Okay, those in favor, please raise your hand and press one. Those opposed, please raise your hands and press two. And once again, your little window will show you that your vote has been received. Vote carries, motion carries by a vote of one hundred ninety in favor, seven opposed, and five abstentions. Now, we've been joined by the Acting Superintendent of Schools and the Chair of the School Committee, and we will now move to, back to the budget, and we are considering the School Department budget on the first table, one. The budget number is one hundred one million, fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-five. We'll hear first from the Chair of the School Committee, and I will then open it for comments or questions, and if you have a saying, you please come to a microphone after Ms. Ditkoff has given her presentation, and I will try to take you in the order in which you have come to a microphone. Those, I think several of you have probably come to Town Meeting loaded for bear for this budget, and I would ask you perhaps to temper your remarks if you're among the vast majority of Town Meeting Members who have not availed themselves of the opportunity to go to hearings on the School Department budget as it was being developed. Ms. Ditkoff?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Susan Wolf-Ditkoff, the School Committee Chairman. It's my honor to briefly summarize the priorities within the school's FY seventeen budget. One year ago, Brookline voters passed an override to add educators and supports for our growing student body and to fund devotion. Tonight, you are considering year two of that three-year budget. The headline is that this year, the FY sixteen budget is being currently spent, just as promised, to taxpayers, and the FY seventeen budget also follows these priorities. Here are five quick highlights. First, as promised, we have kept class sizes low to support individual attention for each child. Ninety-seven percent of our classrooms have fewer than twenty-five students, with an average of twenty-one students per class. And we've accomplished this by hiring nearly eighty teachers over two years and adding dozens of critical support staff for teachers and students, including literacy specialists, math specialists, and guidance counselors. And all the details are in the budget, which is available online. While we don't yet have contract agreements with the union, and while the details are complex, please know the following. All of the funds that were in the override budget for teachers, salaries, and hiring are already built into these budgets. This includes a two percent across-the-board wage increase for FY seventeen, full funding for steps and lanes, which can add, as indicated by the override study committee, another three percent on average across the board, and the town's eighty-three percent health insurance premium cost share, which, again, is noted by the override study committee is, and by the selectmen on Tuesday, is a rate higher than our pure districts. Again, all of the salary increases and hiring promised in the override are already included in this budget, within the funds provided to us by the taxpayers and Town Meeting. But as we all know, contracts are not given by one side to another. They are negotiated by two entities represented by very experienced attorneys, and so the most important message in bargaining, and I'm sure there'll be more questions on this, but the most important message for now is that both the town and the union have now agreed to hire a professional outside mediator. There have been multiple meetings so far. The mediator is a highly skilled, trusted person by both sides, and she's helped many towns and unions who face exactly these kinds of common differences find common ground. Second, we are proud to maintain our commitments to Metco and materials fee in this budget, which support diversity and teacher retention, as well as early education. And as promised in the override, we are moving our educational priorities forward in a responsible way by funding many curricular improvements. Our successful world language program and our enrichment and challenge support, which is designed to challenge all students at their level, increases in the African-American and Latino Scholars Program, the Calculus Project, anti-racism and anti-bias training at all levels, and nearly four hundred thousand dollars towards increased technology equity across our schools. And at this point, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Jennifer Fisher-Mueller. She was here for three and a half hours on Tuesday, but unfortunately, she couldn't be here today. But she is becoming superintendent in another district. And also Piper Smith-Mumford and Rick Rogers upon their retirements. We are very indebted to all of their service. Third, enrollment and mandates remain top budgetary concerns. We've grown thirty percent in our K-eight schools in the last ten years already. Given new housing, fortyBs, condo conversions, this pressure will only increase and is now hitting the high school. In addition, a slew of unfunded mandates continue to come from the state. Educator Evaluation, MCAS two-point-oh, WEADA and RETEL, which are English language learner programs for our teachers, training programs for our teachers, just to name a few. All of them are mandates, and all of them are unfunded. Fourth, some good news about special education. Our commitment to special education remains very strong, small, inclusive classrooms with diverse learners. The good news is that doing the right thing pays off. As we've discussed many times with the advisory committee, our costs remain under control because our high-cost outside placements have actually fallen to historic lows as a percent of students. Also noted by last year's override study committee, this is a landmark achievement among districts like ours. And on that note, we will greatly miss Dr. Karen Schmuckler, as she joins a larger district next year, and we're grateful for her service and her vision as well. The fifth highlight is good news about capital. This winter, we forged an extraordinary consensus with the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee to dramatically accelerate our night school and high school timelines. And in the spirit of transparency and inclusion, we've asked the planning department to help us create an incredibly inclusive process this past winter, engaging hundreds and hundreds of residents all across town, not just parents, but residents, in these critical conversations and decisions. Please save the date. On June seventh, there will be the last board meeting of the spring. It's a joint meeting between the selectmen and the school committee. There'll be a significant update on the activities on the night school process. And also, on June thirteenth, we are going to have our last facilitated session of the year on the high school... on the high school project. You all are very welcome to attend. It should be a terrific opportunity to learn about what's happening with the high school project and think about a place for community input. There'll be multiple focus, multiple groups and breakouts where the communicating can have input. So that's June 13th. And on devotion, I'm thrilled to report that we are on track and on budget so far. A special thank you to Tony Wigley and the building committee. And we are especially thrilled that Dr. Joe Connolly's team has secured terrific swing space for our K-4 students within walking distance of devotion, which is very exciting So a couple concluding thoughts. First, while tonight's focus is the budget, our school committee meetings this spring have devoted enormous time to two other topics, leadership transitions and culture, specifically with respect to equity and racism. We are pleased that the inclusive search processes involved literally hundreds of teachers, parents, students, and residents. And we're very excited about our terrific new leaders, especially incoming superintendent Andrew Bott and new principals at Pierce, Lawrence, and Lincoln. Please know that the FY17 budget funds transition supports and mentorship as our new leaders' success is a top priority for the school committee this fall and next year. In closing, as you know, the budget request was approved by the advisory committee after many meetings that Joe and Mary Ellen had, went through the budget, probably, I don't know, four or five meetings, a couple hours each, and after multiple community forums where the budget was presented. And we had terrific questions from town meeting members, deep scrutiny from advisory as always, and it's been really wonderful to have a strong partnership. So thank you to everyone on the advisory committee, specifically the school subcommittee, for terrific questions and input this year. And last but not least, a terrific thank you to Dr. Connolly. Joe is the captain of our ship. He's led Brookline through a very complicated year of principal transitions and union negotiations, of budgeting and building expansion. He understands the school committee priorities, which are commitment to educational excellence with equity, to increase transparency, and above all, a deep caring for children. Please join me in thanking Dr. Joe Connolly for his incredible service this year. A job well done. We understand there might be some questions.
Well, you, take a seat. We're going to hear next from Mr. Spiegel, who'll give us a little bit of background on the manner in which the school and town budgets have interacted over the years in the development of the so-called town-school split. While he's making his way to the microphone, I revise the vote total for Article 17, when we just, electronic vote we just took. The final, I hope, final tally is 191 in favor, 8 opposed, and 5 abstentions. Mr. Spiegel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stanley Spiegel from Precinct 2. There's been a lot of chatter on the TMMA listserv in the last few days about questions arising about the school budget that people resent finding out about things as late as they have. I want to point out that this is a direct consequence of something we've been having for almost 30 years in this town, the Town School Partnership Agreement, which was not always that way. The Town School Partnership assigns a bottom line to the schools, and although the advisory committee looks at the budget, I'm sure the selectmen do as well, that bottom line is almost never tampered with, and town meeting almost never, never, not almost never, never makes any adjustment in that bottom line, which then leaves it up to the schools to divvy it up within their needs as they see fit. It didn't used to be that way. Before Prop 2 and 1/2 in the early 1980s, the schools had complete authority to name their own tax rate, and they did, as well as having line item authority. But once the total tax take was defined and limited under Prop 2 and 1/2, the bottom line was to be voted by town meeting. And for the first half a dozen years, there were real controversy that town meeting members and that the advisory committee used to settle. The schools would always come in with a request more than the town administrator offered in his budget presentation, and the advisory committee would sit in on school committee meetings, and we would make decisions to increase this budget item or maybe to reduce that one. We did it, and ultimately, the selectmen, who would be defending town needs because every increase in the schools meant a reduction in town, we would reach a viable compromise. But it was a result of a widespread conversation, not a few people from the schools, a few VIPs on the towns, on the selectmen on the school committee getting together and coming up with what they felt was the appropriate split. I don't think that that's democracy, and that's not how it used to work. It used to work that we would hear about the needs that are unmet for the schools. And for example, just a year ago, we had this crisis, insufficient support staff, insufficient social workers or guidance counselors, and we were way behind in technology. We never would have reached that point if it were not for the Town School Partnership, which limited what the schools could ask for routinely. We would have heard years earlier that we're falling behind in technology. We would have heard howls from the school committee saying, "With this budget alignment, we're going to have to lay off social workers. We can't afford to do that." And town meeting, not a couple of people meeting in a room, but town meeting itself, led by the advisory committee, would have made judgments, "Maybe we could do a little less funding of reserves." I, I don't want to pick out particular targets, but maybe, I'll pick one, maybe the maintenance cost of that new park on top of Fisher Hill, maybe we would have had less extensive plantings to save maintenance so that we could fund a social worker in the schools. That's how mature people decide how to, how to deploy a limited number of resources. We've been living with this Town School Partnership for close to 30 years now, since around 1988 or '89, I forget which. But I chaired the school subcommittee prior to that, and the room was full of parents arguing, "Save this music program, save that librarian." We had real hard-fought battles, if you will, but the outcome, I believe, more closely represented what this town wants, and we would not have had the kind of crisis that led to the override a year ago. So I point out that history, it doesn't have to be done this way to have a successful deployment of funds between town and school. I don't believe town meeting should be essentially shut out of that most fundamental decision, who gets 50, do we get 59% of the budget of the schools, 58, 62? What's the right number, not what's a number by some formula, which does not necessarily reflect what the overall needs of the town are and what the preferences of town meeting and the advisory committee recommend, making recommendations to town meeting would be. It's up to you guys, if you want to keep doing it this way and not no and vote up almost mechanically on a bottom line, you can do it. We've been doing it for close to 30 years. I've been talking against it for 30 years, and maybe, maybe we should go back to the way it used to be. I think so, but it's up to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Washinsky wants to respond to Mr. Spiegel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Washinsky. I'm a big proponent of the Town School Partnership. It has brought a level of certainty in budgeting and allows us to work within the confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2. And the school committee, the school administration comes to the advisory committee, and there have been years where the school committee will say that we don't have enough, even under the Town School Partnership. The Town School Partnership has been working for 30 years. We're the envy of other towns in the way we do our budgeting. So I'm a, I'm a big proponent of the Town School Partnership. It works. It's, it's one of the reasons why our, the Brookline budgeting process is as good as it is. Thank you.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, I don't see anybody at the microphone, and that being the case, I'm about to proceed to the next budget item, which is the, Mr. White.
I didn't want to disappoint you, so here we go. George Ivett-White, Precinct 9. I'd like to ask a question about the school budget. And I'm a, I confess, I'm a small-budget guy, a small-data guy, not a big-data guy. So I, I get sometimes sort of caught up in this. So my question is this, if I understand the, the materials that were sent out in the previous year, I guess this year, something close to 70 FTEs, full-time equivalents, were added. And, and so I'm going to ask, first of all, whether or not that's correct. Is that the case? Okay, Dr. Connolly, thank you. So then my second question is, what is being proposed in this budget is the addition of something like 55 and 1/2 FTEs for the coming year. Okay. All right. So here's my question.
Well, you already had two of them, Mr. White, but go ahead.
Well, I, listen, before I get done, I'll have quite a few more, sir. But not now. I've been looking over the book on the Second World War, which is sometimes what this sounds like. And it noted that in the Battle of the Bulge, late 1944, that the one thing that seemed to be the greatest crisis was something, I think, called T-5 or K-5. And it was riflemen, those guys that go up to the front line and, right, and everybody else, but they were all in the back. It evidently, you know, so getting to it, getting to it. So I'm looking, I'm looking at this here, and it says, "We added almost 70 teacher, full-time equivalents, and then we're going to add 55 and 1/2." But when I look at it, it says 5 FTE elementary teachers. And then below that, it says 5 FTE high school-level teachers. And so it adds up to 10. And all the rest of these are specialists. There's a specialist data clerk and a special review funds manager and a regular enrollment specialist and a facilitator and a positive behavioral, I don't know if you've all read this. And my question is this, these aren't teachers. Now, I know support staff is important. I relied on them for 42 years. But kids make contact with teachers on a regular basis. So my question is this, is this budget in some sense out of whack? Shouldn't we be hiring teachers, full-time classroom teachers? And shouldn't we be looking more carefully at specialist, specialist, specialists? So that's my question.
Joe Connolly, interim superintendent of schools. We stated that in the FY16 budget, we added 69 new positions, not teachers' positions. And many of these positions were, we call educators, classroom teachers, support staff, and specialist. Clearly, the override made that possible, made us, we played catch-up this year, and next year, we are continuing to play a little bit of catch-up, but we're, we're addressing some significant needs we have in the area of special education and support staff in the classrooms. Let me give you a breakdown of what makes up the 55 positions educators this year. The first, the first 12 positions, enrollment-driven increases. We have estimated with our enrollment projections that we will need five additional classroom teachers, K-8, throughout the Brookline schools. Three of those positions are 5th grade positions, one's a 3rd grade position, and one's an 8th grade position. When you add five classrooms, it has a, has an effect to require additional support staff, art, gym, music, world language. And those additional five classrooms have required us to also add a total of two specialists, art, gym, music, world language. For example, maybe Heath would get a .2 art, .1 music, town-wide. At the high school, we're projecting an increase of 81 students next year. And so we've given the high school five additional teachers, and they will decide how they'll use those five positions once the student selections are finalized for next year. So those are the, those are the 12 enrollment-driven positions. The next category we have is program support growth. Again, this was part of the year-two override plan, where we identified existing needs in areas where growth was needed, and that accounted for an addition, the need for an additional 17.2 positions. 3.5 of those, this is next year now, literacy specialist or coaches, and they go into the classroom, provide direct services to students, but more importantly, they work directly with the teachers to make the teachers more skilled in the, in the delivery of literacy teaching. We're also adding 3.1 math specialists or math coaches, again, to direct services in the classroom and support for the teachers. This year, part of the 69 positions were added was 4.5 literacy specialists and 3.1 math specialists. So between this year and next year, that's almost 15 literacy and math specialists going into our eight schools, providing direct service to the students and support for the teachers. We're also adding next year 1.6 world language specialists, world language teachers in the K-8 schools. That's going to allow us to provide language choices in grade six in all of our schools, world language choices. We're adding two technology support positions. That's two additional positions to be shared between the eight schools. We're adding a craftsman to, again, help us deal with the renovation needs and the upgrade and maintenance of our schools. And we're also adding a one-building aid. The devotion school, as you know, is moving to the 30 Webster Street down in Coolidge Corner. It's going to be a K-4 school with approximately 500 students. In Brookline, our smaller schools have one teacher aide per school, and our larger schools have two teacher aides per school. That K-4 school with that enrollment of 500 really calls for just one teacher aide. But because we're moving into a, the Coolidge assisted living buildings, an eight-story building, there's a lot of unknowns, we have decided to let the lower devotion K-4 school have two aides next year, so we're adding an aide to that school because of the, of the building they're moving into. The next area is special education and student services. Student Services coordinates health services, registrations, offices of student affairs, and we're hiring one enrollment specialist to help with the tremendous overload of registrations during the school year. We're also hiring a .5 nurse system-wide to help meet our needs in that area. And we're hiring a 1.0 school psychologist. That's in the area of student services. In the area of special education, we're hiring 1.5 team facilitators to help coordinate the, the meetings with, with the staff and the parents, developing the individualized education plans for the kids.
So how are we doing, Dr. Connolly? We up to 40 yet?
Well, real quickly, we have four learning center teachers, four unallocated special education teachers. Each special ed is such a fluid program, they would build four additional teachers in the next year's budget for developing needs next year. Speech and language, behavioral specialist, and four, almost five paraprofessionals to, again, offer support for the teachers as they attend child study team meetings, core evaluation meetings. The, these paraprofessionals will help give us coverage in the classrooms. We're also hiring an occupational therapist. So again, the 55 positions, just about 53 of them are educators, teachers, support staff, and there are a few that it would be a craftsman or a registration specialist for one of our offices. But clearly, the school committee this year, 86% of the, the new funding we're asking for is going to personnel. That's direct service to the kids and to help us also address the enrollment, the enrollment needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. First of all.
First of all, who are you?
My name is Andrew Fisher. I'm from, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 13. Before I ask the two questions I'd like to ask, Mr. Witt has asked, asked me to inquire of the moderator of you. We, she indicated that some of the, some of us withheld questions because we were expecting to hear a report from Mike Samson, from the advisory committee. And would we hear that before a vote?
Nope. You've heard, you've heard the report from... You've heard, you've heard the report from the school committee chair? Mr. Sammon will not have a separate report. Is, the report of the school subcommittee of the advisory committee is set forth in exhaustive detail in the combined reports. Mr. Fisher, do you have a question?
Yes. I'd like, I think it's timely now to ask the question I raised yesterday on behalf of constituents of mine who are inquiring why it's taken two years, and two years of negotiations. We still don't have a contract for our teachers, our dedicated teachers. And the second part of the question is, what part, what obstacles are there that are preventing us from giving our teachers a contract, and how can we expect to overcome them? I then have another, after that I...
Well, you know, you're treading on some delicate ground here because these negotiations and the strategies are confidential, but if somebody from the school committee wants to respond to Mr. Fisher and avoid those sensitive areas, I'm happy to have him do so. And somebody else?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rebecca Stone, town meeting member precinct three, member of the school committee and chair of the school committee's negotiation subcommittee. I appreciate the question, but there is, one piece of your first question is simply wrong. We have not been negotiating for two years for this contract. We've been negotiating since July 2015, and in, in large part, and truly started in September when this, when the last contract expired. So we consider this an eight-month contract negotiation. So that's long, but it's not unheard of. In terms of the obstacles to agreement, the school committee and the teachers have had more than twenty meetings over the last eight months. We have had long, long discussions of the issues that the teachers have been raising. We have done lots of work to try to address them. We have put many proposals across the table. Our proposals to the, to the teachers have not been accepted, and theirs to ours have not been fundable. So we have not accepted them either, and that is why we are still at impasse.
I have a second question that I was asked to inquire this evening. Is there a, can someone give a breakdown of outside, of like a budget line item for outside legal counsel and an explanation of what outside legal counsel has been retained to do?
Can town council give us that information?
I, I don't know the answer to that. Mary Ellen might be able to find that in our budget document. We are represented in negotiations by labor counsel. Sorry? Yeah.
I think it was intended as a broad question. Is there, are there things other than merely the labor negotiations for which outside counsel has been brought?
We understand that your, the school, school committee is represented by negotiating counsel in connection with the labor negotiations. Are there other outside counsel projects in process at this point?
Mr. Moderator, Mary Ellen Dunn, deputy superintendent for administration and finance. The other outside counsel other than labor counsel would be special education council, which is funded through our special education department. And I believe, I'm just trying to look up what that line item is for you, and I can have that in a few minutes, in about a minute.
Well, why don't you look it up and give it to us when you get it, and we can go on to Ms. Bernard, maybe, unless you haven't already.
Proceed.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Bernard, and we'll get that number for you.
Good evening. Lauren Bernard, town meeting member precinct eight. I had a question in, I reviewed the summary, and you talk about a circuit breaker fund. What is a circuit breaker fund? That is my first question. I have four questions. Circuit breaker fund. Secondly, it's, it's in this. I have no idea what it is.
Well, let's have one question at a time, and have a response to that question. Ms. Dunn, could you?
Mr. Moderator, the circuit breaker is funded through the state. It's supposed to be funded at seventy-five percent. It historically has ranged anywhere from thirty-five percent to seventy-five percent. What the district does at the end of every school year, we submit a claim for all of our special education costs, both out-of-district and in-district costs. And then the, the funding from the state is actually allocated across all of the school departments in the state, and sometime, in some point in July, we find out what that reimbursement rate is. We estimate that reimbursement rate going into each future budget year, and we use those funds to expend, pay for, and deduct from our overall budget request for special education costs.
Next question.
Since Ms. Dunn is standing right there, I want to compliment her on, this is a fantastic budget. I mean, this is clear, this is, what, easy to read, and I would implore that you send this to town meeting members starting next, starting in the fall, so that we can review it, because it is imminently readable. And I, I compliment you because I can't imagine the amount of work that went into this, but we would love to have it.
Next question, Ms. Bernard.
So can we get one?
Yes, you may.
Next question, I believe, is for Ms. Ditko. You were, in your speech, you referred to something about technology equity, and I may have written it down wrong, but I would love an explanation of what that is and how it works.
Ms. Ditko.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Conceptually, during the override, what we talked about is the fact that over time, our schools had gotten to a point where some schools had a lot more technology available to them than other schools. You might remember this. So what we did was we, in the override budget, put in funds so that there would be more equitable access to hardware, but also to supports for teachers to use, like PD, professional development for teachers to use the hardware.
Last question.
Last question.
Yep.
Thank you.
There is a new department that is described in your larger budget that I, I did not notice in the summary. It is a department called the Office of Strategy and Performance. Could someone speak to what this department does, how it was created, how much is being allocated to it, and how its director was hired? Thank you.
Dr. Connolly? Oh, Ms. Dunn?
I'll tell you the purpose of the department, and Mary Ellen will tell you the finances. Last year, we had what we called a data team, was made up of three staff members. Those staff members coordinated all the required semitels to the Department of Education, attendance, suspensions, special needs figures, and each year, as you know, it gets, the list gets longer and longer. This, as a result of this year's FY16 budget, we're able to increase that department by three positions. An assistant to the superintendent, a data clerk, and a program specialist. And now we have a department of six people that's not only working with the semitels to the Department of Education, but they're also working, more importantly, with a lot of our standardized test results, MCAS. And we're analyzing the results, and we're sharing those results with the schools, saving the teachers and the principals much effort and time to help better utilize their, their time on direct education. And Mary Ellen could perhaps give you the dolls if you want.
Ms. Dunn, let's, let's have the answer to the question that we left hang, hanging on legal costs first, and then you can address the cost of this new department.
Mr. Moderator, Mary Ellen Dunn, deputy superintendent. The legal services costs are actually split into two separate line items, and in the future, when you actually have the line item detail, you will find a line in the administration which covers our negotiation costs, and that line item is eighty thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And the second line is in our special education budget, under that segment for our legal counsel, which is budgeted at forty thousand dollars. In future revisions of the budget document going forward, you will actually see a legal services section, which will explain in detail what legal services we pay for, what each, what's for special education, what's for negotiations, and then any other legal costs the school committee may have during, during a year that were anticipated or unanticipated. So that will be a future explanation that you'll, you will receive in the document. So that covers legal expenses?
And the costs associated with the department about which Ms. Bernard inquired?
So the, one of the feedback pieces I picked up in terms of the budget document in the override is sort of, we have technology and support services in three separate places. The strategy, Office of Strategy and Performance actually encompasses our former data team, which was housed under the superintendent and also may have been found under administration and finance. The staffing for those employees are embedded in the information technology section of our budget. Next year, we will be carving all of those out, so the Office of Strategy and Performance will have its own budget line items. The information technology section, which is our help desk, on-the-ground support, will have its own section, and that really is a department that coordinates with Kevin Stokes and the town IT department. And then also really clarifying what is education technology in terms of the school department, what services and staff are funded there. So I have the staffing breakdown for the Office of Strategy and Performance, which is roughly about five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for eight FTE.
Thank you. Mr. Richmond?
Clint Richmond, precinct six. Couple of questions. We, we heard a figure about the average class size, and given the growth that we've had, I was wondering if that average class size has gone up or down over the last ten years under our student growth? And in particular, for the budget that's proposed next year, is the, is that number going up or down, sort of being cognizant of the fact that even small changes in that number can have a wide-ranging effect? And I guess even I'd ask for another particular breakdown or trend on early childhood. Where class sizes are typically lower.
I'm pleased to report that the class size is, is holding firm as a result of these additional five teaching positions at the elementary and the five additional teaching positions at the high school. Our current class size this year in K8 is twenty-one students to a class. We have two hundred and fifty-nine classrooms in our eight schools, and it's amazing that only seven of those two hundred and fifty-nine classrooms this year have enrollments over twenty-five students. That's because Brookline uses a buffer zone approach, where they have soft boundary lines between the schools, and they're able to balance enrollments. They do a very, very successful job. Because we're adding these five elementary, five high school positions, we're able to maintain that twenty, twenty-one class size average.
Thank you. My second question is, I understood from the other night that we are going to be pursuing some school funding projects that are not MSBA-funded. Are we committing to maintaining the same level of green building, the CHPS standard that would be mandated under MSBA? And in fact, they have additional funding for kind of what we think of as a stretch goal for, for green building. Is there any, any comment on that?
David Pollak, town meeting member from precinct eleven, and vice chair of the school committee and chair of the capital project subcommittee of the school committee. Our town building department has a deep commitment to sustainability in all of our buildings and green building, and so does the, so does the school department, and so does the school committee. Actually, the MSBA projects have moved on from CHIPS and to other standards, but the, the commitment is strong. And I can't speak to what standard, whether it's a lead standard, or a green community standard, or a CHIPS standard, or a state standard, that specifically we would be complying with on either of these projects. I, I don't know that the building commission has taken that up directly, but at a high level of sustainability is, is something that there's a thorough commitment, yes, a deep commitment.
Well, is that a commitment to maintaining levels that are equal to what we would get at our MSBA, I guess, more specifically?
I can speak personally, yes. And the building commission and the building department and, you know, the project committees and all will have to, like, follow through on that, but yes.
Final question. In terms of that data collection department, is that, is that department mainly responding to state mandates, or is it being used for other internal purposes in terms of data analysis or data-driven review of our, of our, of our teaching staff?
Dr. Connolly?
Thank you for asking that question, because when I spoke about this earlier, I forgot one of the most important aspects of that department. You've heard a great deal of talk about the ninth school and the high school expansion. That department is playing a key role in the study, in the coordination of those two very, very important major projects. Really, two or three of the people in that department are spending a great deal of time working with Melissa and the board of selectmen and the school committee and planning those two major projects.
So sort of redistricting, it sounds like.
Thank you. And before we hear from Mr. Miller, I want to apologize for the two, to the two Brookline High School students who were, we did every, everything we could to have them able to speak early this evening, but that has not transpired. And they were in articles ten and twenty-one, and we won't get to those until after we finish the budget and finish article nineteen, and I don't know when in the world that's going to be. Mr. Miller?
Bob Miller, precinct eight. I was wondering whether the school committee could address whether one of the three finalists for superintendent withdrew from the, from consideration.
Well, why, well, go ahead.
Susan Ditko, chair of the school committee, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Has that been made public?
It was, it was announced as part of the vote to appoint Mr. Bott superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Bernard, before we give you another moment in the sun, let's hear from the gentleman behind you.
Thanks. Brian Hoekleitner, precinct six. I have two kids at the Pierce School, and I have a question. It's a very concrete one. At Pierce, and I think this is true at Baker and one or two other schools, lunch starts at ten-thirty AM due to overcrowding, and my question is simple, is there anything in the budget in the planned ninth school, in any of the other proposals that are before town meeting now or in the foreseeable future that will change that and will allow us to stop having lunch start at ten-thirty at many of our schools?
Dr. Connolly?
That is one of the major goals of a ninth school. Currently, our core facilities, cafeterias, are too small to service the populations we have in the schools. So instead of going with two or three lunches a day, we're required to go with four or five, starting at ten-fifteen. Once we have the ninth school online, hopefully by the year 2020, 21, we'll be, we'll be able to balance the district lines and try to have the enrollments in a, in a position that we can have no more than three lunches in each school per day. So maybe an hour and a half a day opposed to, close to three hours a day. Right now, our schools are overcrowded, and the core facilities are not adequate, delimited to just two or three lunches a day.
Thank you, Ms. Ames. Did you have another question?
Yeah, just a follow-up. So does that mean that the ninth school, when it's done, will actually relieve overcrowding so at, at Pierce, and it'll actually go down enough that that will be the case?
We hope. And we're hoping, we're hoping at this point, when the ninth school is online, we'll then at that point in time, look at the district lines, we'll try to, we'll try to benefit all schools. Now, sure, some district, some districts will benefit more than others, but also some have a greater need than others. So clearly, the ninth school is intended to address that concern. As you know, there's, with the enrollment projection, we're talking about maybe a ninth school not being adequate. At some point, at some point, we may need a tenth school. At some point, at some point, we may need a 10th school. But clearly, the driving issue is to provide the class size and the classrooms, to maintain our class size, and to also address our, our core facilities not being adequate at this point in time.
Thank you. Ms. Ames?
Mariela Ames, Precinct 15. Two questions and a request. I have been made aware, along with other folks, that the Pierce Playground is going to be renovated. And the school has spoken several times about inclusion, equity, et cetera. So the issue in the Pierce Playground is about lights for the basketball court. And I'd like to ask that the School Committee support this, advocate, and if necessary, help fund the lights for this basketball court in the hot summer months particularly. And that the lights not be just the safety ones, but actual use like the ones in the tennis courts. I would appreciate a response, a pledge, a affirmative answer.
I can't speak for the School Committee, but I will say that the Pierce Playground is under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they are the commission that makes the decisions on lights. I understand, I've seen some email and Facebook traffic about that issue. I would suggest that that's the body to advocate. But I, I do think the Park and Rec has gone through a process which also considers the butters to the, to the playground, taking their concerns into account. So, thank you.
And the lighting would affect how they operate. Second question, please. Let me just comment that I, I find very not satisfactory, but second question for the school, the answer by, by the town. Second question for the school, how much has the school department spent in studies related to the ninth school?
Can you give us a number, Ms. Dunn? Why don't you ask your next question while Ms. Dunn looks up the answer to that one?
Okay. Thank you. Well, it's another how much question. How much does the school department spend in technology for the schools? I, I make this comment because two years ago or so, iPads were brought to my elementary school, and the use was very little.
Well, can you answer either of those number questions, Ms. Dunn?
Mr. Moderator, I'll answer the first question, thank you, which is the expense for the studies. The studies for the ninth school, of which we are including the Facilities Master Plan from 2009, that was done by MGT. And the reason why we're including that is that was sort of the, that was the first study that really indicated to Brookline that we were embarking on a severe trajectory of enrollment growth, and had, and was updated in 2011 by MGT for demographics. Also included in that was a 2013 Brookline School Population Capacity Exploration, which is known as B-Space, which has resulted in a commitment from the School Committee and the town to expand and place strategy was implemented. And that is probably the beginning of the school classroom capacity article that Town Meeting appropriates annually since then. In addition, we, while there was no cost, there was demographic projections done by an MIT team in, as part of the override study committee report, and then recently, the Civic MOXIE commissioned report. So the B-Space, the 2009 facilities plan was 110, the 110,000, the B-Space was 63,750, and the Civic MOXIE was roughly 78,000, for a total of approximately 251,000. The high school studies and plans include a high school, Brookline High School study from 2013 completed by HMFH, that was 50,000. And then recently, we are finishing up, and that's part of the report that's going to be given on, was given on March 15th, but will also be given on June 13th by SMMAs, Manny McKee and Associates, is roughly 92,500. So the high school studies is 142,500.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Olens?
I'm Andy Olens from Precinct 5. I just have a question about the process for planning for a new facility. The need for the high school facility is no secret, and it's been talked about for a long time.
Somebody doesn't want to hear from you.
My question may provoke that kind of a reaction. Anyway, but the, the question is, there was a proposal to the state building assistance for help in building a new high school. It was pretty clear, I think, that the likelihood of getting funded from that part was negligible. Because Brookline has had a lot of funding, and also the high school got a big chunk of funding a few years back. There was a site available directly adjacent to the high school, that I think any rational, logical, intelligent person would say, this is the best singular site for a high school expansion. You don't need Civic, MOXIE, or another committee, or anybody else to tell you that. Physically, it's right there, it's adjacent to a public transit station, it has everything you want. The question is, that site was available. It was a well-known fact that it was available. Perhaps even the owner would have been happy to enter discussions with the town. Why wasn't there some sort of a contingency fallback plan done by the School Committee to put a lock on that site, regardless of whether the state was able to fund it? Because we are in a situation now where the state isn't going to fund it, and we may be into a protracted negotiation to get that site. I just think that this planning process, in terms of the high school, where the site was available, was abysmal, and there was no backup plan. Thank you.
Mr. Woschinski? We're talking, ladies and gentlemen, about 111 Cypher Street, I believe?
Neil Woschinski again. Thank you, Mr. Olens. I'll just say one thing, the site wasn't any more or less available than it is now. What's going on now is the, the owner is proposing a, a project which he could have proposed, you know, at any time. So that kind of causes us to look hard before that gets its legs. Because it's a lot, if, if, if that project is built, it kind of takes the, that, that site off the table. So right now, we're, we're, we're putting this, we've just appointed a committee to serious, take a serious look at that site, to do all the kinds of due diligence that you would do when you purchase a property. And that committee is, has its first meeting next Thursday. And we've, and I'm told the MSBA doesn't pay for site acquisition. So we are moving ahead at this point, you know, the owner has kind of forced our hand to, to look at this right now. You know, we'll, we'll see how that goes, and we'll see how that due diligence goes.
Well, Mr. Mr. Olens' point about perhaps having missed an opportunity may still stand. Mr. Blood?
Roger Blood, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, and I have a question for one of the members of the School Committee. During the School Committee's public discussions last year in the run-up to the, the funding of the, the override, at, at one of the public meetings, the head of Curriculum and Learning, I think the Deputy Superintendent, and the new incoming principal of the old Lincoln School, came forward and advocated very strongly that there be adequate funding for the, the town-wide adoption of a, an experimental curriculum known as project-based learning. I know, they were very excited about some program meetings they had been to out in San Diego. I know that's going to be implemented at the old Lincoln School for one year, but I wanted to ask if there is either funding or any planning taking place for a town-wide adoption of this experimental curriculum?
Yes, Ms. Ditkauf?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Susan Ditkauf, School Committee. So project-based learning is a way of integrating various pieces of a curriculum into one approach for students. So you take science and literacy and math, and you put it all together into one way of teaching a subject, such as environmentalism, for example. There are, there's a lot of interest in it because it's a way to engage students differently. It also does have some scheduling implications, because you have to get the teachers working together, so they need time to do that. And there are, there's evidence base that it does do things like not only increase student engagement, but also improves test scores. That said, as far as I know, I don't think there's a major amount of increase as far, yeah, I didn't think so. So there, the, it is happening at the old Lincoln School with Principal Crowley, because the old Lincoln is an interesting middle school model to be able to do that in and try it out. There is interest from many individual teachers in trying to use some collaborative time in their schools, but it is not a district-wide investment in, in professional development. It's, there are teachers throughout the, the system who are using collaborative time that already exists in the budget to try some of these things out. Does that answer the question? So it's not a new, there's no new funding for it?
Until the, the one-year experiment at the old Lincoln School can be fully evaluated, perhaps by the new office, no, no town-wide plans would be adopted prior to such an evaluation.
I would say no new, for sure no new funding until we would understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Pam Katz, Precinct 9. My son happens, sorry, my son happens to be at the old Lincoln School, and project-based learning is awesome. But my question is on page 17 of the handout we got. And this is just kind of a clarification question, and I have a second question after this, but Dr. Connolly ran through all of the new positions, but there's a section that's called reorganization, year two unfunded until recurring funds identified. And I was just curious that, as to what that was.
Ms. Dunn?
Mr. Moderator, Mariella Dunn, Deputy Superintendent. The unfunded positions that you see under the reorganization is year two of a reorganization plan that was undertaken and initiated, I believe by Dr. Lupini, a year ago as part of the override, override budget. And we, through the course of prioritizing positions, did not have enough funding available for these positions to continue or begin the year July 1. So these are in the budget because they've been approved by School Committee, disclosing them here, so that they are not new positions next year. They are embedded in our, in our budget document, in our FTEs, and they will be, when funding becomes identified and available, they will come to the School Committee for a request to actually execute and actually post those positions and assure the School Committee that we have those funds available to sustain those positions. If we don't have funding available to sustain those positions, they will go through the budget request process for FY '18 and be evaluated against all of the other priority requests that will come through.
Thank you. Next question.
And one other question, which is whether or not of...
Go ahead.
Whether or not there's any money in the budget to cover the expenses for collective bargaining in the event that the teachers' requests exceed what we're anticipating?
Well, we have a collective bargaining, I, I guess that's not for, that's just the town side.
I'm assuming that the collective bargaining reserve on the town side is for the firefighters, or is that just general? So is there, is there a similar reserve or funding in the event that the teacher requests, that the BEU is requesting more than what you are anticipating? Is there any wiggle room in the budget to fund the BEU requests?
Mr. Moderator, Deputy Superintendent, the, first to clarify is that the, because there was an answer that the rest of Town Meeting may not have heard. The town's collective bargaining account is for town. The School Committee can only bargain and settle for, they have to have all of that money within their operating budget. So depending on what the settlement is, will have a budgetary impact on the school department budget.
Thank you, Mr. Selwyn.
Thank you. Lee Selwyn, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. Dr. Connolly outlined the staff acquisitions for fiscal 16 and 17. If my memory is right, it came to about 125 additional professional staff, of which, and my numbers, my memory may be slightly off on this, but it sounded like only about 10 of those or thereabouts were going to be classroom teachers.
I thought it was 55, wasn't it? Well, go ahead.
Well, anyway, here's, here's my question. Including the, the fiscal 16 and 17 acquisitions, what percentage of the total professional staff of the school department are actual classroom teachers as opposed to the various specialists and support staff? And how does that percentage compare with other suburban school districts such as Newton, Lexington?
Ms. Dunn, can you answer the first part of that question, anyway?
I can answer, Mr. Moderator, I can answer that on page 16 of the handout that we provided Tuesday night is a breakdown of the 55.67, of which 28.18 FT, full-time equivalents, are teachers, 19.32 full-time, 12, sorry, excuse me, are school-based support, which are direct classroom support at full-time equivalents, and then the rest are non-classroom support. With regard to the percentages of our, of our teachers based on our staff, I don't have the exact percentage. We're roughly 800, over 800 full-time equivalent teachers out of probably almost 1,500 full-time equipment employees, if not, if you include our daily substitutes, we may be approaching 2,000 employees.
Question is, how that compares with our counter?
That is not atypical of a large district such as this with the population that we have, with a class size of averaging of 21. So we're pretty much on par with your equivalent districts of Newton, Lexington, Cambridge, and others. I'd have to get all, I'd have to get and do the research to prove that out.
Is it possible to do that at some point? I mean, not, obviously not tonight, but at some point it would be helpful.
I will talk to the School Committee Finance Subcommittee about whether we include that kind of data in our future budget documents.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, we spent a full hour on the school budget, and I, I thank the members of the school department and the School Committee for their responsive responses to your questions and comments, and it's time to pass on, to move on to the next budget item, which is employee benefits, line 22, at the bottom of the first page of Table 1. Item 23, Reserve Fund. 24, Stabilization Fund. 25, Affordable Housing. 26, Liability Catastrophes, there's zero funded. 27, General Insurance. 28, Audit and Professional Services. 29, Contingency Fund. 30, Out-of-State Travel. 31, Printing of Warrants and Reports. 32, MMA, Master Thirty-two, MMSU municipal association dues. And the item thirty-three is debt service borrowing, ten million, seven forty-two. So, the total non-departmental expenditures, including, by the way, the, no, I'm sorry, total non-departmental expenditures of seventy million, eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, four sixty-four, and total general appropriations to this point of two hundred forty-three million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, six sixty-four, to which we add the special revenue financed appropriations that we dealt with on Tuesday, items thirty-four through sixty-seven, total of eight million, eight hundred seventy-four thousand, forty dollars. So, the total appropriated expenditures in the budget is two hundred and fifty-two million, two hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred four. There are some non-appropriated expenditures that are listed at the cherry sheet offsets, state and county charges, overlay budget, and tax titles that town meeting has no control over. Those amount, mostly the state and county charges, those amount to eight million, three hundred, two thousand, one hundred seventy-one, for the total expenditures, total budget of two hundred sixty million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. I'd like to have a motion to approve the budget in that amount and has broken down on the, in the advisory committee's vote. This is an omnibus vote in addition to the items that we voted on separately. Is there a second? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries by a vote of two hundred fourteen to one. We proceed now to article nineteen, and the motion under article nineteen is on page nineteen dash eight. It's, there's a line missing from the, in the middle of page nineteen dash eight, it says voted by a vote of twenty-four to nothing, et cetera. And then the motion starts with the first whereas clause, but before that, please insert the following, voted, colon, that the town adopt the following resolution, colon, and then you start with the whereas clauses, so that it's a proper motion. And that's, motion is made by Mr. Davez and seconded by Ms. Humphrey. I call on Mr. Davez.
Thank you. Now for something completely different. I'm Rob Davez, town meeting member from precinct five and co-chair with Barbara Brown of Hidden Brookline, which is an ad hoc committee of the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. Next slide. Hidden Brookline's mission is to bring to light hidden histories of slavery and freedom in our town. We help uncover the story of slavery in Brookline's past and work to install an inscription in stone to remember those buried at the old burial ground, burying ground on Walnut Street. And this resolution will help bring a hidden story of freedom to light. Next. From the red hills of Gordon County, Georgia, Roland Hayes rose up to be one of the world's great singers and carried his melodious voice into the palaces and mansions of kings and queens. This quote is from a speech in nineteen sixty-seven by Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. He frequently mentioned Roland Hayes to inspire people, especially students, to reach for higher goals. Roland Hayes was a giant in the history of American music, but here in the town where he lived for most of his life and was once revered, there are no permanent memorials to honor him. In the next few minutes, I'll tell you a little bit about Mr. Hayes's remarkable life, about Brookline's place in Hayes's life, and about a dedication of a plaque in front of his former home. Next slide. Roland Hayes was born in very meager circumstances in rural Georgia in eighteen eighty-seven to parents who were tenant farmers on the plantation where his mother was once enslaved. And Roland learned his singing at his church and became known for his fine voice. At the age of eighteen, despite the disapproval of his mother, who was convinced he couldn't make a living off singing, and despite the fact he had only a fifth-grade education, he was invited to enroll at Fisk University, where he joined the renowned Jubilee Singers. He became their star tenor. Next. In nineteen eleven, when the Jubilee Singers performed in Boston, Hayes saw opportunity here, and he decided to stay and develop his classical career. And by nineteen seventeen, he was ready to be a professional singer, but Boston wasn't ready to accept him. As he would demonstrate repeatedly throughout his life, he was confident in his talent, yet he refused to be denied. He gambled all he had, and he rented Symphony Hall, posted ads, and sold tickets himself. It was an audacious gamble, but on the night of November seventeenth, nineteen seventeen, every seat was taken. His success that night proved he had arrived, but when he asked the manager of the BSO for help in promoting further concerts, he was told, Roland, that will never happen here. Like other African-American artists of his time, Hayes decided to escape American racism and seek renown in Europe. Next. In the cities of Europe, his fame grew, culminating in a command performance before King George. In nineteen twenty-three, with his reputation firmly established, Hayes returned to the U.S. to become the first African-American to be featured with the BSO. And he hired none other than that same manager who told him he couldn't do it here as his own manager. His worldwide success, however, did not preclude facing bigotry. And there was one particular night in nineteen twenty-four in Berlin, Germany, when he was truly tested before an unwelcoming audience. In his autobiography, Hayes remembered that evening. When I stood, when I entered the concert chamber at the Beethoven Saw, I found myself standing in a flood of light. In front of me, a blackout, blackout audience stood unquietly, sat unquietly. From the rear, there rolled out a great volley of hisses which seemed to fill the hall entirely. I took my position in the curve of the piano, closed my eyes, lifted my head into singing position, and stood as still as a statue. I waited perhaps five or ten minutes altogether, listening to the ebb and flow of the antagonistic sound. No one came to my defense, but finally, the attack petered out. When the silence came, the hall was more still than any I had ever sung in. I conveyed my readiness to my accomplices with only the slightest movement of my lips and began to sing Schubert's Du Biest de Ruh, which otherwise would have occurred later in the program. The entry to that song is almost as silent as silence itself. For the Germans, du bist de Ruhe, which can be translated as you are rest in peace, is like God bless America for us. And when Roland Hayes finished, he got a standing ovation, as we would say today, he killed it. Across the world, he broke the color barrier and cut a pathway for others to follow. In nineteen twenty-four, the NAACP awarded him their highest honor, the Spring Guard Medal. Throughout his life, he actively influenced the next generation of African-Americans, concert singers, by corresponding, giving advice, teaching and coaching. And he counted amongst his friends Marian Anderson, Eleanor Roosevelt, Dwight Eisenhower, Leontine Price, and Langston Hughes. And he was one of the world's greatest tenors, but he made another special contribution to music. He brought African-American spirituals into the classical repertoire. He always included one or more spirituals in all his concerts, believing that they belonged to the world. Even today, the beauty of songs like Steel Way and Swing Low, Sweet Chariot, are often sung with Hayes's own arrangements. His life's work in music and against prejudice continues to enrich our lives today. In nineteen twenty-five, racial patterns of exclusion could make it difficult for even one of the most highest-paid singers to purchase a home. Fortunately, Hayes had been the guest of a family who lived at fifty-eight Allerton Street, and they were very pleased to sell him their place. He lived here for almost fifty years with his family. Proud of his heritage, he and his wife, Alzada, took the unusual step of giving their daughter the name Afrika, and she grew up as one of a handful of African-American students in And those of my neighborhood who attended the old Lincoln School in the nineteen sixties finally remembered that in June, children would walk with their teachers from school to Roland Hayes's house and serenade him with happy birthday. And in nineteen sixty-two, Carnegie Hall hosted the concert to Marcus's seventy-fifth birthday. Letters poured in from around the world. Langston Hughes, Jackie Robinson, teachers and friends, the High Street Hill Association, his neighbors on Pill Hill sent a large bouquet of flowers and a note of congratulations. For Hayes' eightieth birthday, Brookline declared June third, nineteen sixty-seven, Roland Hayes Day. And at a ceremony at town hall, it was presented with an engraved silver tray. Hayes responded by saying, my career has demanded a great deal of travel. When I look at a map of the world, certain cities have significance: Nashville, Boston, London, Paris, Moscow, and then I discovered Brookline. No other place in the world has been so happy for me. He died ten years later at the age of eighty-nine in nineteen seventy-seven. In recent years, there have been several concerts honoring Mr. Hayes, but there's no permanent memorial in this town where he spent most of his life. And that's going to change on June twelfth with the dedication of a bronze plaque in front of his former home. The plaque will be mounted on a granite corner post that resembles others found in the Pill Hill local historic district, and it will feature a Maori leaf sculpture of Roland Hayes that was carved by world-renowned sculptor Robert Schur, the same person who did George Washington for the Washington Monument, Ted Williams for the Ted Williams Tunnel. I would like to invite everybody to the dedication ceremony at three P.M. on Sunday, June twelfth, rain or shine. The street will be blocked off in front of the house, and it will feature Liz Walker as emcee, and children from Voices of Boston, formerly known as PALS, will sing, as well as Fisk Jubilee Singers alumnae and Berkeley professor Donna McElroy. Governor DeCockis will say a few words, and Christopher Brooks, co-author of a recent biography about Roland Hayes, will also speak. The plaque will be unveiled by the Hayes family, and Roland Hayes's own great-grandson, a classical singer, will close out the program. So, in closing, I would like to say that our committee has worked closely with a lot of people on this project. We would like to thank Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, Lloyd Gellino's Office of Diversity, Bill Smith from BPW's Engineering Division, the Preservation Commission, the High Street Hill Association, Hank and Janet Goddard, who are the owners, current owners of fifty-eight Allerton Street, and especially the family of Roland Hayes, two of which, two members are here tonight. They've sat through that scintillating discussion we had, and I would like to introduce to you Roland Hayes's daughter, Afrika Hayes Lamb, and Roland Hayes's great, Roland Hayes's granddaughter, Zaida Lamb.
Thank you for the tribute.
Sitska Humphrey, precinct six, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. We thank the Hidden Brookline Committee, the standing committee of the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations for reviving the memory of Ronald Hayes, who sang with the BSO for all the crowned heads of Europe and who lived right here in Brookline on Allerton Road with his family. Mr. Hayes was so revered in our community that June third was proclaimed to be Ronald Hayes Day, and as you heard, he was often talked about by civil rights leaders as breaking the color barriers across the world. The resolution was slightly amended to make it easier to read, but we are in full support of the resolution. We also wish to thank Barbara Brown and Rob Davez, who worked so hard on bringing all the facets of this commemoration together, including a concert last year, a celebration this year where the bronze plaque will be installed, and for all the legwork and fundraising that they have done for this project. We also thank Hank and Janet Goddard, who live in this beautiful home and are so excited to be part of this. And of course, we wish to congratulate the Hayes family, one of whom I hear sang in the high school chorus, perhaps on the stage behind here, with one of our advisory committee members, and I just had to add this. So, the advisory committee unanimously and joyously recommends favorable action on the amended resolution as listed on page nineteen eight and nineteen nine with a vote of twenty-four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Bernard Green for the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen also would like to thank the Hidden Brookline Committee for its great work honoring this great son of Brookline. Article nineteen is a resolution seeking the memorialization of Roland Hayes through the installation of a bronze plaque in front of his former home at fifty-eight Allerton Street. We really have to do this because, among other reasons, his home state of Georgia, Georgia, has already installed a plaque in Calhoun, Georgia, in his honor. So, we can't let Georgia outdo us in honoring Roland Hayes. The, as Rob mentioned, in the audience are Roland Hayes's daughter, Afrika Hayes Lamb, and his granddaughter, Zaida Lamb. I talked to Afrika earlier, and she, of course, went to this very high school, and she tells me that she was in the homeroom of our esteemed Governor Michael DeCockis, which I think many of us knew. But she also says, and this is something I think we don't, we're not aware of, and that is that Roland Hayes had met with Martin Luther King when he was, when King was a student at BU. That's a part of Hidden Brookline that we need to investigate more. You know, what was the connection between Brookline and King? There is at least that connection in terms of a meeting, if not more than one, between Hayes and King. Roland Hayes entered Fisk University as a preparatory student, and only after some time, became a full-time student, began singing with the Fisk Jubilee Singers. You know, I used to live in Nashville, and Nashville is considered, or called, Music City. People think that that's because of country music. The reality is, it's because of the Fisk Jubilee Singers, a little before Roland Hayes's time, who traveled the world, particularly throughout Europe, and created a reputation, created a great reputation throughout Europe, and from that, the term Music City was given to Nashville. After studying at Fisk, he moved to Louisville, and from there, he was asked to join the Fisk Jubilee Singers for a concert here in Boston. And that is where he made the connection to Boston and Brookline, and of course, the rest is history. The design of the plaque, going back to the plaque, will be, will go through the design review process, of course. The current owners of fifty-eight Allerton, Hank and Janet Goddard, support the placement Uh, the current owners of 58 Allerton, uh, Hank and Janet Goddard support the placement of the plaque in front of their house, and the Board of Selectmen is very, very, um, proud to, uh, support and recommend favorable action unanimously, uh, on, uh, to this Warren article. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the, Tom, Tom Clark advises me that, uh, this is Roland Hayes' birthday, so that's an especially auspicious time for... Oh! It's Mr. Green's birthday! And, and, and almost equally auspicious event. Ms. Ames?
Thank you. Mariela Ames, Precinct 15.
Uh, we need the mic, please.
Mariela Ames, Precinct 15. Happy birthday, Bernard. So, um, and you said Georgia should not and cannot outdo us, but Brookline can do more. And it seems to me that Brookline would really, uh, benefit, make one wrong right and benefit if we consider changing the name of the Paul Pender Rotary and rename it Roland Hayes. And if I am allowed, I propose this as a motion right now and move that...
No, no, you're, that's, uh, not within the, unfortunately, within the scope of the article, but you could bring this to the naming committee, which is where these, uh, these items originate.
We are, okay, we are right here, we could get it done.
Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ames, that would not be proper procedure.
Thank you, that's fine.
Sorry.
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Ms. Fraley.
Oh, Regina Fraley, Precinct 16. I hate to rain on your birthday, but there's a couple in England. About two weeks ago, I saw it on an, uh, an English, um, computer internet newspaper. They take it upon themselves to make signs for famous people who lived in England, and don't you know, the picture shows Roland Hayes. He apparently lived in England for years, so we're not first, sorry.
On the motion...
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, go ahead.
Paula Friedman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 14, and also a member of the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance Executive Board. The Brookline Neighborhood Alliance, for those who may not know, is an association of all the neighborhood associations in Brookline. In conjunction with this award, I would like to just announce that at our annual meeting on June 8th at Town Hall at 7:00 PM, the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance will be recognizing Hidden Brookline with one of its annual awards in recognition of their, all their work, but especially this Roland Hayes Award.
Thank you.
And you're all invited to attend.
On the motion on page, middle of page 19-8, over to the bottom of page 19-9, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We move now to Article 10. The motion offered under Article 10 is on page 10-7. Move to refer the subject matter of Article 10 to a Selectmen's Committee to examine the impact and feasibility of stronger anti-tobacco measures. Moved by Ms. Humphrey, seconded by Ms. Heller, uh, Ms. Humphrey.
Sitska, ooh, let me just get this right. Sitska Humphrey, Precinct 6, again speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. We thank Dr. Ross for putting a spotlight on nicotine addiction and seeking ways to stop our citizens from becoming addicted and opening themselves to a variety of ills that will cut short their lifespan. Probably many of us here received pop-up ads from the Coalition for Responsible Retailing anytime we were online these past weeks. I certainly did, and no doubt, these pop-up ads, uh, and the, uh, the responsible retailing were, uh, may have been funded by the tobacco industry. Now, our small retailers, the mom-and-pop stores, have always used the business model of providing essentials such as bread and milk alongside the sale of a product that the consumer apparently really needs, in this case, tobacco. When CVS stopped selling tobacco, they used the same model, and they are using the same model now, however, now the product that they sell is something that people need and is health-focused. But it is the same idea. The tobacco industry has created many victims, those who are ill, those who died, those who have lost family members, and I believe that victims may also be the folks who are part of the franchises that sell this product. Even though it is a legal product, it is also a potentially lethal product that would not be approved for sale if it would be coming to market now. Everyone who spoke about warrant Article 10, and we had a tremendous amount of input from all of our merchants who, who sell tobacco as well, they know the terrible health effects that smoking has, also those who came, who were addicted to nicotine and were smokers. You know the, uh, the effects of, uh, of tobacco, because we have had many tobacco-related articles here over the past years. And another part, another, um, piece that people say, "Well, you could, it, it should be a personal choice." However, once you are addicted, there is no choice, because you need to feed your addiction. Tobacco use and addiction are a concern for all of us, and during initial discussions, nearly one-third of the Advisory Committee members who were present that evening for the meeting did support warrant Article 10 as it was proposed. However, there are an awful lot of concerns about the effect of doing so. And so, the Advisory Committee voted to support referral to a study committee, as was also recommended by Dr. Ross and by the Public Health Council, to closely examine ways to eliminate tobacco use in our town, and the reasons are in particular that warrant Article 10, as it was originally brought forth, did not forbid smoking, but it seeks to change the sale of tobacco in Brookline. Tobacco products are easily obtainable throughout the commonwealth and in our neighboring towns, and for this reason, education remains an extremely important aspect. The state cut back funding for education programs instead of increasing funding so that we could reach youth at an earlier age. The peer leaders continue to study ways to decrease the use of tobacco products and also are including vaporizing liquids in their study and how to look at that. The enforcement issues need to be studied when additional regulations are considered, and the economic consequences of changes in the sale of tobacco products have to be looked at carefully so that we avoid unintended consequences and have more victims on the economic side. A number of things have been looked at, um, uh, tobacco-free generation, lapsing tobacco licenses, and so on and so forth. The result is that the Advisory Committee recommends to refer the subject matter of warrant Article 10 to a Selectmen's Committee with a vote of 16-3-0.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. And Mr. Patel, would you please come forward and sit in the front row?
Nancy Heller for unanimous Board of Selectmen. Let me first say that I'm wearing this hat and glasses, not to hide from you, but I have a light sensitivity issue right now. Um, this article addresses a continuing and important public health issue, because tobacco is deadly and highly addictive substance. Centers for Disease Control has estimated that almost half a million people die from tobacco use each year in the United States. I'm gonna take the advice of the moderator, and Chairman Woschinski is always telling us on the Board of Selectmen, "Don't make the points that your previous speaker has made," and Sitska's done an excellent job summing up this article. I do wanna add one other thing, um, and talk about the report that was released this week, earlier this week, by the Centers for Disease Control. Statistics on the rate of smoking in the United States has declined significantly, down from forty-two percent fifty years ago to fifteen percent in 2015. So last year's drop was two percentage points below the year before, the largest one-year drop in fifteen years, in the last fifty years, sorry. So that's significant, because in our public hearing, we heard from tobacco ban proponents and also from citizens concerned about the impact of a total ban on small businesses, many of whom support a referral so that the impact on locally-owned, independent businesses can be examined and solutions to address the impact can be devised. If the trend in the decrease in the rate of smoking by adults continues, the so, the fewer, even fewer and fewer people are smoking, the small businesses in Brookline which sell tobacco will face shrinking revenues, regardless of what we do tonight. If we want to retain small businesses as part of Brookline's commercial landscape, I believe we do, most people in this room, I'm sure, support that, it is in our interest to think about ways to help those businesses focus on sources of revenue other than tobacco. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports the Advisory Committee motion to refer this issue to a Selectmen's Committee to examine the impact and feasibility of stronger anti-tobacco measures. In addition to the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, we hope that you join the petitioner, the Advisory Council on Public Health, and the Chamber of Commerce in supporting the motion to refer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Come forward, speak into the microphone. You have five minutes, sir.
Good evening. I'm encouraged by the participation of a Brookline High School student in tonight's debate on Article 10.
Uh, could you tell us your name and, uh, address and why you're up here?
Uh, my name is Jemmen Patel at 1298 Beacon Street. We're in the process of opening a cigar business, and that's why I'm here. Preventing minors from accessing and using tobacco should be a top priority. Tobacco is a highly regulated product, just like alcohol, and for good reason. When Brookline took the step to increase the legal age of purchase from eighteen to twenty-one, you did so to help reduce the impact of social sources, where minors currently obtain the overwhelming majority of their tobacco. Yet the greatest, social sources remain unchecked, as well as the fact that it is legal for any citizen of our state to possess and use tobacco regardless of their age. I think it's important that the young people of Brookline get educated about the dangers of tobacco, alcohol, and drug use at a young age. As a retailer in Brookline, we are on the front lines of keeping tobacco out of the hands of youth. In fact, there is no one that does more to keep tobacco out of hands of youth than the Brookline retail community. We're the ones who are checking IDs and refusing sales to minors. As you consider Article 10, I wanna make sure it's clear to the Brookline Town Meeting members that the original article has absolutely nothing to do with curbing youth access to tobacco products, because the proposed regulations would only ban the sale of tobacco products to adults. The fact is that the current regulations don't allow the sale of tobacco to people under the age of twenty-one. It could be argued that the regulation may actually increase access to tobacco for minors, because sales would be removed from the highly regulated environment of a store, and sales would shift to the black market, streets, parks, and other places. I also wanna make sh, clear that the amended Article 10 would do nothing to curb youth access to tobacco, since it would only ban sale of tobacco products to people that are twenty-one years and older, similar to the original Article 10. While the term tobacco-free generation sounds intriguing, it doesn't really reflect the reality. There are hundreds of stores surrounding Brookline that will still be able to sell adult products to adults. Maybe the term should be black-market tobacco generation, where retailers and public officials give up their oversight of tobacco unintentionally. We have purchase-possession-and-use laws in place for alcohol, and we do for good reason. These products are not intended and shouldn't ever be used by minors. Alcohol can and has killed men in one night. Alcohol-related accidents even kill people who weren't even drinking. What is more dangerous than that? Yet we treat alcohol and tobacco very differently. If Brookline were to take the drastic measure of banning the sale of legal product like tobacco, then would Brookline also seek to ban the sale of alcohol next? At what point do we entrust adults to make adult decisions and act sincerely, not symbolically, just to protect minors? It is my sincere hope that if the town members vote to further study efforts to curb youth access to tobacco, which all retailers actually support, that it won't be a study about curbing adults' access to an adult product, rather an honest conversation about curbing youth access to tobacco. I hope we will study the reasons why we don't let our children purchase, possess, or use alcohol, but we allow them to smoke. I also hope that the retailers who, every day, through thousands of face-to-face transactions, and who are truly on the front lines restricting youth access to tobacco, have a seat at the table and a significant voice on this issue. We know more about this issue than anyone else can attest to. We don't just read the studies, we live them. And thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration of keeping Brookline minors safe. Let Brookline remain at the vanguard of tobacco control policy by being the first to make sure that our kids understand that tobacco is as dangerous as alcohol and other illegal drugs, and send a message that Brookline is serious about protecting them. Thank you.
Dr. Ross and Ms. Overman, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please?
Thank you. So my name is John Ross, I'm the petitioner. Uh, I'll just briefly summarize why cigarettes are bad for you, which you all know already. So cigarettes are the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. Half a million Americans die every year because of tobacco products. That's more deaths in HIV, heroin, cocaine, meth, alcohol, motor vehicle accidents, and guns combined. Free radicals and cigarette smoke physically age your body, similar to a daily ex-dose of low-level radiation. The economic costs of tobacco are estimated at $320 billion a year versus $30 billion a year in tax revenue. Tobacco really is a deadly and highly addictive drug, which in terms of addictiveness and mortality, really ranks with heroin. Most smokers wish they had never started, and most of them would like to quit. I believe it's an unsafe consumer product that should be taken off the market. They are the only consumer product that kills you when used as directed. We are currently asking Town Meeting to support the amended version of the Warren Article with the more modest goal of appointing a study committee to examine the impact and feasibility of stronger anti-tobacco measures in Brookline. So the revised Warren Article does not mention specific policies, and a vote for this Warren Article does not imply support for any particular anti-tobacco policy. Policies that I would like it to consider include setting a cap on the number of tobacco permits, as has been done in San Francisco. There are currently twenty-nine active tobacco permits in Brookline. Currently, anyone with $350 and who is willing to fill out some paperwork can obtain a permit to sell tobacco in Brookline. I'd like to see a freeze on issuing new tobacco permits until the number of existing tobacco permits has declined through attrition to about half that number. This measure would prevent the further proliferation of tobacco retail outlets in Brookline while not affecting current tobacco retailers in any way. If anything, it would benefit them by limiting competition. The public health literature shows that the density of tobacco retail outlets has a particular effect on two types of smokers: young people who are experimenting with cigarettes and established smokers who are trying to quit. The more tobacco retail outlets in an area, the more likely novice smokers are to become established smokers, and the less likely established smokers are to quit. I would also like to see stronger enforcement of existing tobacco regulations in Brookline, with steeper penalties for selling cigarettes to underage customers, and making infractions of tobacco sales policies a matter of public record. Finally, I'd like to see enhanced education measures in Brookline schools. We had a number of high school students here, uh, with the Brookline Parent Education Network, uh, and the peer leaders, uh, in the high school have done tremendous anti-tobacco work and continue to do so, and I think they're very interested in the committee and would love to have a voice on it. So in conclusion, actually, I just wanna say one word. Some of you may wonder why at a local level we're dealing with tobacco. It turns out that because of prevalent inertia at state and federal levels of government, the best anti-tobacco measures are currently being, being done at the community level, such as Tobacco 21. If you believe that tobacco is a significant public health problem, and if you believe that local action can make a difference, then I ask you to support the amended version of Warren Article 10 to appoint a committee to examine the feasibility of stronger anti-tobacco measures in Brookline. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poverman.
Kate Poverman, Precinct Eight. I am here, some will think it quite paradoxically, against, not necessarily the measure, but against the idea of imposing great restrictions on tobacco. I think that it is worth further study, but my concern is that Brookline tends to get into this nanny-state mentality, where we try to tell people what to do when it's for their own good, and that can go too far. I think that it's great to study how to take steps to reduce teens from smoking, and agree with Mr. Patel in how he is enforcing it. What is perhaps more persuasive is that my husband, Rafael Bueno, is head of lung surgery at the Brigham and Women's, and in discussing this with him, he also agreed that we cannot be people's parents, that preventing this, preventing people in Brookline from buying in Brookline will just hurt our retailers and cause people to go from my house one block over to Alston. I think that perhaps examining if possible ways of increasing taxing on cigarettes may be a good way to go, and I just want to be sure, as I'm sure you will, consider all ramifications, including the quote nanny-state ramifications of actually passing such a bill.
Thank you, Ms. Binker Cosen. Now, I should have asked you this question earlier in the game, but are you a registered voter?
No, I am not.
Okay. Ms. Binker Cosen is not a registered voter, but she's a student at Brookline High School, and if there's anyone here who objects to her addressing Town Meeting, would you please stand?[715.20][715.20](Laughter). No objections, go ahead.
Hello. So as you just said, I'm McKenna Binker Cosen. I'm a junior at Brookline High School, and I'm part of the Peer Leadership Program, where we are focused on working to further the anti-tobacco campaign and really inform the students about what the harms of tobacco are, and essentially, what we believe is that this study is extremely helpful to us, mostly because we, the students, we want to, many of us, like, we need to further our understanding of what tobacco is, and many of us, when we, students get involved in tobacco, they don't really understand what they're getting into. And what a study to further, like, restrict tobacco sale can do in Brookline is reduce the availability, and that's really a step forwards to tobacco-free generation, because every time that there are less messages telling us, hey, you should check out tobacco, that's a step forward in students not being even thinking about this, right? And this is why it's really important for us at Brookline High School to pass this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsmith.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Goldsmith from Precinct Eleven, and I'm speaking in support of the warrant article, and I want to say happy birthday. So I want to thank Doctors Ross and Sandell, because they brought this issue forward because they work at the forefront of medicine. They see the suffering from this every day, and reducing that suffering in the next generation is their motivation. So I find it interesting that we, as Town Meeting members, sort of constantly are redefining who we are as a town. We don't like stuff from in plastic bags, we don't want cameras to watch us twenty-four hours a day, and somehow this proposal pushed up against another boundary, as you said. We don't like the idea of limiting what we can buy and sell, but that comes up against a public health question. And I find that challenging also. It feels a little totalitarian, it feels a little self-righteous, and yet it feels like it's an important issue to address. And I have to say, sitting on the advisory committee and with the emails I received in the past few weeks, I was so struck by the flaws in the arguments against this that it made me think harder about why this is an important warrant. So there were sort of two categories of arguments. There was an economic argument and a public health argument against this warrant. The economic argument sort of went, there are a lot of immigrants who work in the businesses that sell cigarettes, that the businesses rely heavily on cigarettes for their profit margins, and that most of the people who buy cigarettes are driving through Brookline for gas, and if they didn't spend their money here, they'd spend it elsewhere. And in thinking about that, my feeling was, many of us, all of us, came from immigrant families who did hard things to make our lives better, but there's got to be a boundary, and selling a toxic product is not really something I feel strongly about defending. The idea that the profit margins are so strongly based on cigarettes just seems troubling. They've got bigger problems than this warrant article, if this is their biggest concern. And lastly, the idea that people driving through town are somehow not our problem seems really troubling to me. Cancer doesn't know about zip codes, disease doesn't know about zip codes, and we're all in this together, so I really don't like that economic argument. And then on the public health side, I sort of heard two things. One, the thing that must have come from the cigarette industry said, "Public health campaigns don't work," and other people said, "The smoking rates in Brookline among teens aren't that high anyway, it's not a big deal." And I took exception with both of those arguments. So first of all, it reminded me of a public health campaign when I was in high school, which was to have free condoms in schools. That was in the early era of HIV, and it was meant to be HIV prevention. This made people really uncomfortable for a lot of reasons. They didn't like talking about it. And also, high school, suburban high school kids like I was, were really not at the highest risk of HIV infection. And so, you know, it was similar. Is this a big issue among high school kids? Now, it turned out that a lot of schools did have free condoms. Did it save lives, probably. Did it reach the most at-risk people, probably not. But it changed the conversation, like this warrant article would. And I have to say, we might have a sort of utopian view of Brookline High School and our kids, and they don't smoke that much, but in fact, the most recent health survey said that fifteen percent of kids in Brookline High tried smoking last year. That might be lower than in prior years, but it sounds too high to me, and those kids are getting their cigarettes somewhere. It's too easy for them to get a product that, as Dr. Ross said, when used as directed, leads to a treacherous and horrible death. That's what we're selling, and that's what we're making accessible to our kids. And I want to point out also that just two years ago, we voted to get rid of a toxic cloud of smoke in front of this high school, the smoking section that was protecting someone's rights theoretically for years, and we probably saved lives by doing that, and I think it's within our power to do that again. So just to finish up, is there some reason we shouldn't study how to reduce smoking among our kids and among our population? You know, when I think about other public health campaigns that butt it up against discomfort, think about within recent generations, we didn't have campaigns, or let me say it this way, we had a sense of discomfort telling people not to drive drunk, to wear seatbelts, and now we have a vocabulary that says-
You have one minute.
Thank you, that those are perfectly acceptable challenges. And we have vocabulary around safe sex and around sexual assault that wouldn't have existed a generation ago. So we have the power to make another change of mindset, and I want you to think about the idea of a smoke-free generation. If you're older than I am, could you have imagined that phrase in nineteen seventy-five? In nineteen seventy-five, my uncle, who's living with lung cancer, had two lungs, now he doesn't. Or in nineteen sixty-five, a smoke-free generation, that's when my husband's mother was still living. She died a few years later of cancer. Or in nineteen fifty-five, when for people my age, your image is that everybody looked beautiful smoking. So we can be at the forefront, and I want you to use your imaginations and imagine what's not there yet, a smoke-free generation, and I hope you'll support this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Vitolo.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Mr. Moderator, a number of speakers have referred specifically to youth smoking rates and curbing youth smoking, but the language that I see in the combined reports informing this committee does not refer at all specifically to youth, and I'd like some clarity in ensuring that this committee will be looking at ways to reduce tobacco consumption amongst all ages, not at all focused specifically on youth.
Well, the motion to refer is the subject matter of Article Ten, and if you read the warrant article itself, it refers to banning the sale or distribution of tobacco products within the town without regard to age. Ms. Farley?
Regina Farley, Precinct Sixteen. I share so much of Jennifer Goldsmith's feelings. I have a wonderful group of friends from my high school, and each year, there's one less. We all smoked. It was, the message was, it was sophisticated, and nobody objected. Now we get, we do need to, as the young lady said, we need to send a new message that it isn't sophisticated and it isn't helpful. I support a study for, because I'm hearing from the retailers that their income was actually thirty to forty percent of tobacco sales. I never would have imagined it was that high. They need to convert. They need to find another way to run their business, and I hope the committee will take that as part of their charge, to find ways through demographic studies, for example, how about substituting some healthy snacks instead of cigarettes? But the bottom line is, at some point, cigarettes have to go. I myself have, haven't smoked for twenty-five years. I am highly allergic to it, and yet every time I go to church, I have to run the gauntlet of cigarette smokes. I have to hold my nose and close my eyes, because that's how allergic I am. We need to stop it. It really is a killer. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Ross, Precinct Twelve. I think that, I think that nobody here is old enough to remember prohibition. Neither am I. But I, but I, I think we've all heard of it, and we've all heard of the things that happened during prohibition. It didn't work, and it was a disaster. I am, I am opposed to smoking too. I've never, in fact, even when I was a teenager, I never tried smoking. That has to do with the fact that my mother was a doctor, and she knew before most people about the health problems. She stopped smoking twice before it took, and I remember my father stopping smoking. We've made so much progress in reducing smoking without prohibition. We've been smart about it, about it, and we're getting rid of smoking slowly but surely without prohibiting it, at least for adults. We should keep going that way. I'm going to vote for the study, because I hope that it comes up with more measures that we can use to make smoking history, as they say, but, but I, at a time when we know what happened when we, when they tried to prohibit alcohol, and we're talking about removing prohibitions on marijuana, and some people are talking about removing prohibitions on other drugs, we should not be talking about prohibiting smoking as much as we want to get rid of it.
Yeah, well, nobody's talking about prohibiting it. We're talking about referring the subject matter of the article to a selectmen's committee to examine the impact and feasibility of stronger anti-tobacco measures. On that motion, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-one, which is the last of the articles we're taking out of order. The motion under Article twenty-one is on page three of the blue supplement, that the town adopt a resolution relating to Climate Action Plan. It goes over to the top of page five of the blue supplement, moved by Ms. Hummel, seconded by Ms. Heller.
John Harris, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. First, I want to briefly say warrant Article twenty-one was a group effort by members of Climate Action Brookline. I encourage everyone in this room to get involved with Climate Action Brookline. It's an excellent organization, and in particular, I'd like to thank David Laskoya and David Pantolo for their help on the issue. The changes recommended by a subcommittee of the advisory committee led by Amy Hummel have led to a revised version that is tighter, shorter, and stronger, and thank you. So I think you'll find that the petitioner's team, the advisory committee, and the Board of Selectmen are actually in agreement on the best way forward on this issue. I'm also delighted to report that warrant Article twenty-one has received unanimous endorsements from the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee, Brookline PACs, Climate Action Brookline, and the Green Caucus of Town Meeting Members. Warrant Article twenty-one is a resolution, not a piece of legislation, because energy policy is dealt with at the state, regional, and federal levels, not at the town level. But I assure you, this is not merely a feel-good project. It's designed to have a real impact on a pressing issue. The issue is obviously not controversial in Brookline, but apparently is extremely controversial at the state level. I'm going to talk about procedure briefly and then get into the substance. I'd ask if folks could look at, in your blue supplement, if you would look at page twenty-one dash four, and at the bottom of that page, there is a list. If Town Meeting passes this warrant, the town clerk will send the article and the explanation to that list of relevant state legislative, executive, and regulatory decision-makers. In addition, we, the advocates of the article, are going to send it to a long list of solar and environmental advocates around the state. So far, the reason being that so far, relevant bills on the issue of solar electricity have been proposed by utility companies or others, and the solar people have been on the defensive to their great detriment. We want to encourage solar providers, because they are performing a great service for all of us, to take a lead on the issue. We want to tell them, tell them that we stand firmly by them, that the public wants to replace as much as possible fossil fuel or nuclear power with renewables, in this particular case, solar electricity, which by the way, is also called photovoltaics or PV. We want the maximum development of solar electricity consistent with the market and with real-world environmental restraints unconstrained by arbitrary bureaucratic limitations the way it is right now. Another procedural thing, I would just ask, on your blue page four, if you look at the bullet points that are on the center of that page, it's many items that we consider essential elements of a strong and effective PV policy or PV industry in Massachusetts. In the interest of time, I'm only going to talk about the most urgent and the one that compels the issue, which is the issue of net metering, which is that at night, everyone draws electricity from the grid, but under a program of net metering, if you have solar panels on your roof, on your backyard, et cetera, the electric companies are, the utilities are required to accept any excess generation your solar panels produce above what you're using at that very moment, and to reimburse you for it. The current, pardon the pun, regulatory situation has a cap periodically imposed on the maximum amount of electricity utility companies are required to accept from you and to reimburse you for. This is extremely detrimental to the agency, to the industry. Previously, caps have been set and then reached in the years two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fourteen, each time months or years sooner than planned, and each time requiring installers, solar installers, many of whom are mom-and-pop operations, so without a lot of economic flexibility there, to postpone their projects, put down their tools, to rush to lobby state legislators, often with only last-minute notice to plead that the caps be increased. And unfortunately, this trend is continuing.
You have one minute.
Thank you. On April eleventh, Governor Baker signed a bill that raised the caps by sixty percent, equalling the annual, the annual energy consumption of one hundred thousand homes. But, for example, because the old caps in about half of the state, one hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in Western Mass, had actually been reached a full year before, all of the projects that were on a waiting list were allowed to resume work or begin work, but there was such a rush of new applications that the new cap was reached only two weeks after it was set. So once again, new projects are stalled. The old caps that affect Brookline were in fact reached at the end of March, so we, in fact, had two weeks of deadlock before the new caps took effect. It's estimated that our new caps will be reached sometime later this year or early next, so the problem keeps happening. We all understand that entrepreneurs and business people have to deal with the uncertainties of the marketplace, with local siting and zoning issues, et cetera, but the current situation of, quote, "lurching forward in fits and starts" is no, is no way to support an industry that helps us reduce fossil fuel pollution while employing more than fifteen thousand Massachusetts workers. We must eliminate the arbitrary caps-
No, Mr. Harris, you lurch into your seventh minute, and-
Oh, I'm sorry. Two sentences?
Certainly.
Thank you. "We must eliminate the arbitrary caps on solar net metering and send a clear signal that Massachusetts is serious about expanding solar power." That's a quote from the group Environment Massachusetts. "The much-vaunted Omnibus Energy Bill released yesterday morning deals only with issues of hydro and wind, contains nothing about solar." So what, let's see- So what, let's see, I strongly recommend favorable action on warrant Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kazantsev, and our apologies to you and your colleagues, we have, that we're, we've kept you here so late. I have to ask you whether you're a registered voter, and I assume the answer to that is no. So, we have the same situation. Ms. Kazantsev is here representing the Brookline High School Environmental Action Club and would like to address Town Meeting. If there are no objections, she will do so. If anyone objects, please stand. No, you're not gonna stand. Go ahead.
My name is Moshe Kazantsev. I am a freshman at BHS and a leader at, of the BHS Environmental Action Club. Our club brought a resolution supporting warrant Article 21 to the BHS Legislature, which represents both student and faculty. So here are some key points, passages of our resolution. Whereas Brookline Town Meeting is going to vote on resolution concerning the future of the town's usage of the photovoltaics/solar energy, and specifically supporting the practice of net metering. Whereas BHS students and faculty care about the environment, and whereas solar electricity is important for the environment, now therefore be it resolved that BHS Legislature supports and encourages the Town Meeting warrant article proposed by John Harris affirming Brookline's commitment to solar electricity and supports the BHS Environmental Action Club in their efforts to bring attention to this important issue. And I'm happy to say that the BHS Legislature voted unanimously to pass this resolution. So as we told the BHS Legislature, one of our long-term goals for the school, including solar energy here at BHS, is perhaps even getting rooftop solar panels installed while the building is renovated, whenever that happens. World, warrant Article 21 will make solar more cost-efficient for the town of Brookline and will therefore help our long-term goal become a reality. In conclusion, we urge favorable action on Article 21.
Thank you. Ms. Hummel, and Mr. Pantolon, please come forward and sit in front row.
Amy Hummel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12, speaking for the Advisory Committee. So this resolution seeks to affirm Brookline's commitment to solar power by asking the town to press the state legislature for a comprehensive solar program, specifically to send this warrant article and its lengthy companion explanation to specific political and energy officials. To create a comprehensive and fair solar program, the petitioners asked the state to consider each of the eight bulleted items the petitioner previously listed at the bottom, started at the bottom of the blue supplement. The petitioners want to raise awareness that the state, the state nets metering program has limited benefits and can't stand on its own if the town and the state are going to continue to expand solar use. The warrant article is not prescriptive. Rather, these bullet points are guideposts, and the petitioner's goal is that by thoughtfully implementing each over time, the state can optimize power use and benefits for individuals, for individuals, businesses, investors, and utilities. The Advisory Committee was generally supportive of the article. In our long, slow march away from fossil fuels, solar power seems like one good pathway, and net metering alone clearly has its limits. There was some discussion about the inequities with the current net metering program. Homeowners, businesses, and municipalities who participate in net metering don't pay a distribution charge, despite the fact that they use the same infrastructure to transmit and receive power, but all others pay the charge, effectively shouldering the distribution cost for all. The committee agreed there are legitimate cost-recovery issues related to net metering and other solar program solutions, but recognized the purpose of the article is to encourage conversation and action that will be financially fair and sustainable for all. The committee also agreed that by jump-starting discussion of additional and complementary means of promoting solar power use, utilities which have historically operated using a centralized power model will, may be incented to move to a decentralized distribution model, which might accommodate more solar use. Facilitating these changes will take time and require financial incentives, investments in upgrades, and improvements in infrastructure, but in the long run will ideally benefit utilities, customers, investors, and energy providers. The committee also discussed the timeliness of the article in light of the recent legislation on net metering. And you've already heard in some parts of the states, caps have been met, although the governor had raised them, they'll likely soon be met again, but it does seem like the state needs a push in that direction of moving to a more broad, comprehensive program. So the committee did have concerns about the lengthy explanation, which typically it does not vet, yet will be submitted as part of the article and represent Brookline's position, but I should note that we did attempt to provide considerable feedback, and the petitioners were gracious to listen in some ways. However, we ultimately supported the warrant article, because solar power is one means of reducing greenhouse gases, and working to build a regulatory system and infrastructure that supports fair and accessible use of solar energy is in everyone's best interest. So by a vote of thirteen to two, with two abstaining, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on warrant Article 21.
Thank you, Mr. Pantolon.
Good evening. Dave Pantolon, Precinct 7. I was one of those who helped to write warrant Article 21, and my contribution to that is based on my background, which is as follows. I'm an electrical engineer with a doctorate degree. I just retired last summer after working thirty-four years for a New England electric utility, working in transmission planning, distribution planning, and reliability analysis groups. I know how the electric grid works, how a utility thinks, and what working in a regulated environment is like. I also know how the environmental movement thinks, having been a passionate member of it since my youth and currently being co-chair of Climate Action Brookline, and I've been a resident of Brookline for thirty-four years. The goal of the warrant article is to impact our solar energy destiny by community action from the bottom up. Our energy future is critically dominated by rules and policy set at the state level, but since we at the local level are in turn implicated, impacted rather, by that state policy, it is imperative that collective voice of community government be heard at the State House. Many petitions to the State House regarding solar energy policy have to do with net metering and associated caps. The debate, however, is often framed only in the context of net metering as we know it in the past. In this debate, there's often a lack of understanding of how power systems and the regulatory environment work, how rates are designed, how utility investment costs are financed and paid over time, and who's subsidizing who. At the same time, there's a lack, there is a lack of appreciation for the urgency of climate change, and the lack of appreciation for the inability of historical institutional infrastructure and policy to address that crisis. While you hear environmentalists refer to social value of solar, and you hear utilities refer to the financial and technical problems with distributed renewable energy, they both have valid arguments, and neither should be ignored. Warrant Article 21 tries to break the logjam in thinking and to broaden the scope. It argues that fair value for solar generation must take into account the timing of energy flows either into or out of the grid relative to the daily and seasonal load cycles. It must take into account this flow pattern relative to flow patterns that already exist in the grid at specific locations, and relative to the distributed capacity of the grid, both at the transmission and distribution levels. It advocates for continued modernization of the grid with technologies that optimize benefits for both the customers and the grid. With this broadened scope, issues of equity, low-income safety nets, and the sharing and the avoidance of cost will be more likely addressed fairly and accurately. These are complex issues. They will not be resolved by oversimplification, and yet by the same token, the urgency of climate change does not permit the tolerance of stalemates, inaction, or the use of ignorance as an excuse. Other states and communities are moving forward with a vision that is similar to what you see in warrant Article 21, namely California and our neighbor, New York. They are doing so with careful analysis, data collection, and phased implementation, a policy implementation. Massachusetts and Brookline must not be left behind. We are at a crossroads in the development of our long-term regional power delivery, infrastructure, and energy policy. It is our time to speak up and be heard. Warrant Article 21 is an informed-
You have one minute.
-and well-considered resolution. It is a timely horn in the fog and a roadside pointing, road sign pointing from Brookline to the future. I urge favorable action on warrant Article 21.
Thank you, Mr. Ditko.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joseph Ditko, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11. I have a very quick technical question. The warrant article talks about not just sending out the resolution, but also the explanation of this article, and I wanted to know whether that was the original explanation, the revised one, or both would be sent to these persons?
I believe it's the most recent iteration of the, of the explanation, which is found on the yellow supplement. Is that correct, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Nancy Heller for Unanimous Board of Selectmen, agreeing with the Advisory Committee on its motion under this article. Our goal, to continue advocacy for a very strong and comprehensive program of solar energy in Massachusetts. Recently, we did have success in our advocacy efforts. When February, the Board of Selectmen approved and sent a letter which had been drafted by our Climate Action Committee, urged the governor and the state legislature to increase net metering caps, and that letter became a model for other communities, including Newton, and to join us in appealing for an increase in net metering caps. As you've heard, we sustained some success from this. The legislature passed, and the governor signed an increase in those caps. Unfortunately, they're not enough. Part of the state has already reached them. The rest of the state will probably reach them soon, and so we need more advocacy. But even if we are successful in getting the caps totally eliminated, net metering alone is not a sufficient strategy to ward off greenhouse gas emissions. We need a multi-pronged approach, and this resolution does an excellent job of defining and advocating for a comprehensive solar approach. This doesn't preclude other approaches for other kinds of renewable energy. We need those too, but we hope that this resolution becomes a model for other communities, as our letter was before it, and the goal of, with the goal of adoption by the Commonwealth of a strong and comprehensive solar energy program. Please vote favorable action. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher. Mr. Fisher, your opportunity is going once, going twice, gone. On the, on, oh, Mr. Fisher, yes, come forward, please. Now, Mr. Fisher, we've been very patient, so-
Thank you. That would be appropriate. Andrew Fisher, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. I was in the hallway with my daughter and granddaughter, and I think it's, it's for future generations that we need to make the statement that we make in Article 21. I've taken the step myself, because this is inside, we've put solar panels on our house and found that we are not using electricity from the grid for basically three-quarters of the year, and part of this, we're not paying for electricity because we're, the electricity we return to the grid far exceeds what, what we, what was represented would be when we put the panels on, and we are putting money into the grid and only pay for electricity roughly December, January, February, and by March, there's enough, and part of that is because we accumulate enough credits from net metering by feeding into the grid. When we do that, we are allowing the power structure, the infrastructure that we all draw power from, to use less fossil fuel. This comes to, I want to just remind us all of two degrees and 360, which are numbers that lead to a third number. Those, it's two degrees of increase in the temperature that will lead to irreversible climate change. In order not to reach two degrees, we need to not burn eighty percent of the fossil fuel that's, that's in the ground. We have to stop fracking. We have to stop digging oil out of the ground. We have to basically leave eighty percent of the available fossil fuel unburned. Net metering is a last-ditch effort, or the cap on net metering is a last-ditch effort of a dinosaur industry, pun intended, the, that's seeking to take the last profits while, before we destroy the planet. If, if we're serious about leaving a healthy planet for our grandchildren collectively, we need to begin, not begin, but, but push hard on converting our power grid from a, to a non, to a renewable power grid, and, and we can't do that with caps that, that make it a stop-and-go instead of a highway for solar power. This resolution matters. The issue of net meter, of net metering caps is, is before the State House today, as we've heard, and we have a state representative who's still here, who, who can go back and argue more strongly for removing net metering caps if he has the will of Town Meeting behind him. Democracy is not trickle-down, it's trickle-up, and we can make, we can make an important statement today. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on the page three to five of the blue supplement, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries by a vote of 185, yes. I'm announcing the results of a vote. It's 185 to one. If you have a question or a comment, please come to the microphone. We now turn to Article nine. The motion under Article nine is on page nine dash three, middle of page nine dash three. Over to the top of page nine dash four, it's moved by Mr. Franco, seconded by Ms. Hartabek, and the gist of it will be explained to you by Mr. Franco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the body. Ben Franco for Unanimous Board of Selectmen. Article nine recognizes the expanded portfolio of the Economic Development Division of the Department of Planning and Community Development by making two bylaw changes, changing the name of the division to include the words "long-term planning," and expanding the responsibilities of the division as listed in the bylaws. The proposed changes are in line with the expenditure approved in the budget vote by this body, taken under Article eight, and that is the hiring of a long-term planner in the division. As members know, the Economic Development Division has been charged with advancing several long-term planning efforts during the last twelve months. A strategic asset plan is being pursued to identify municipal needs and determine, determine the capacity of the town to accommodate those needs in existing and potentially future facilities. Major parcel study and planning around the- A major parcel study and planning around the site even, a potential ninth elementary school are also the responsibility of the Economic Development Division. Most recently, the Economic Development Division has been charged with investigating the possible acquisition of 111 Cypress Street. Because of the additional responsibilities of the division, and specifically the Director of Economic Development, the Town Administrator filed Article 9 and proposed the hiring of a new planner in the town budget. The Board of Selectmen believes the renaming of the division is appropriate and wise to formally recognize the additional work the division is carrying out. Accordingly, by a vote of 5 to 0, the Board of Selectmen recommends a vote of favorable action.
Thank you, Ms. Hardabek.
Kelly Hardabek from Precinct 7, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. By a vote of 18, 0, and 4, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the motion offered by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. On that motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries by a vote of 183 to 1. We now turn to, we disposed of Article 10, we turn to Article 11. The motion is on page 11-10. It's to refer the subject matter of Article 11, which has to do with trees, to the Selectmen for appointment of a committee, et cetera, in the words of that motion made by Ms. Khan and seconded by Ms. Daley. I call on Richard Murphy. The principal petitioner. Before you start, sir, I remind Town Meeting members to turn in your handheld devices as you leave the auditorium, whenever you choose to do so. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Richard Murphy. I'm the petitioner for Article, Warren Article 11, Tree Bylaw. This is a tree bylaw that came out of a Moderators Committee back in 2002, 2003. And at the time, the town didn't act on it. At the time, the need for either a three-quarters or a full-time person on this for enforcement purposes, from what we understand, is the reason for this bylaw which was introduced. Back then, I made a decision to reintroduce it, knowing that development in this town, the density and the population and everything, I think is concerning to everybody here. So, next slide. We take a quick look at the density within the state of Massachusetts. Brookline is ranked 10th in the state for most densely populated city or town. Only the town of Winthrop is the only town ahead of us that Brookline is the highest town or the most densely populated town in the state of Massachusetts. Next slide. Taking a look at the bylaws, just a quick overview. The tree bylaw is basically not telling anyone that they can't cut down any trees, and the purpose of it is looking to protect designated trees on private property during construction phase. Demolition of an existing structure for a replacement for a new dwelling, whether it's residential or non-residential. An additional 10 percent or greater as far as building addition, residential and non-residential. Total new construction of a lot. Protecting or removal, replacement of shade trees. And then, a piece that we added was significant land disturbance activity as defined in the Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan. Next slide. What we're looking to protect or the mitigation of protected trees is the DBH, which refers to the diameter of the breast height. And this is measured at four and a half feet off the ground. It's basically what a tree is measured as far as the thickness of it. So, we're looking to protect a tree that's at least eight inches. Understand, it takes 25 years for most trees to reach that maturity. So, it's a lot of history that takes to get to that stage. We're looking at the replanting or replacement of a tree. Any of those trees that are removed, we're saying is, we want to replace at least 50 percent as far as the size of that tree, either on that land or in a designated other area within the owner's property, with their permission. Each replacement tree would be at least a minimum of three inches in thickness, at least a nice, healthy tree as far as replacement. Next slide. These are examples, and I just have about 10 slides as far as before and after examples that I've seen in my travels, and I know there's many more examples that everyone else has probably seen in their neighborhoods. But right now, there's currently a project over on Sears Road, completely wooded area, 13 acres. It's going to be subdivided, and there's going to be a lot of housing built in that area. And the circle that you see is the area where most of that development is going to take place. Just to the south part, or the smaller circle, is where there's wetlands and everything. So, we keep on encroaching in on wetlands, the environment and everything. And I think protecting trees and everything is a buffer or a protected area for those sensitive areas. The next slide is basically just illustrating them carving away as far as access to this area. If we take a look at another piece of property on the next slide, 315 Lee Street, which actually happens to be right across the street. This is taking a look at global map, global, Google Maps, excuse me, taking a look at the overhead, and you get a good impression as far as the canopy of what trees have to offer as far as shade protection and what they offer for the neighborhood.
You have one minute.
You take a look at the, next slide. This is a same shot from the street. Take a next shot, and this is what it looks like today after clearcutting. Take a next shot. This is what the backyard looks like. It's about a whole acre. Every, every tree on this complete lot had been cleared, except for one tree. Next slide. This is 20 Intervale Road. There's a house back there on 20 Intervale Road. It was set back because of all the Roxbury puddings down that's in South Brookline. Next slide. This is what it looks like today. You can see the circle where that house was, and a much larger house was built in front of it. Not one tree was replanted, and there was no plans for that. The next slide illustrates Baker Circle, this lot here. Next slide shows where it stands today as we wait for development to take place there.
Now, Mr. Murphy, you've been, you've had your five minutes, and so, please wrap up as soon as possible.
I will. All right, 20 seconds. Next slide. Basically, the bottom line is, could this be Brookline in 20 years? Is basically, it's a snapshot of what the back bay in Boston looks like as we keep, do we keep on increasing the density of Brookline and not protecting our trees, which really is a protection for our neighborhoods? Next and last slide is, by protecting our urban forests, we protect Brookline's future, our home, our memories. We must protect our urban forests, and I ask for your support for referral for the Selectmen's Committee. And I want to thank the Tree Planting Committee, Conservation Committee, the Advisory Committee, the Global Housing Committee, and the Selectmen for all their support on this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Janice Khan, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15, speaking for the Advisory Committee, which unanimously supports referral of Article 11 to a Board of Selectmen-appointed study committee. Article 11 is a citizen petition that asks Town Meeting to adopt proposed Article 8.32 of the town's bylaws to preserve and protect both public shade trees, which already have state protection under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 87, and trees on private property, which meet certain criteria such as a diameter of eight inches or greater, measured 4.5 feet above the ground. Although public shade trees are legally protected under state statute, the vast majority of trees within a municipality must rely on local statutes for protection. And it turns out that municipalities as far-flung as Borondarra, Australia, and Mississauga in Ontario, Canada, have ordinances that protect designated trees on private property. There are commonalities among all these bylaws, all these laws. They define what a protected tree is. They require permits. They assess financial penalties for violations. They require that removed trees either be replaced or that monies be put into a replacement But they are also unique. And Borondarra, Australia, for instance, seeks to regulate any activities which endanger significant trees and canopy trees, which are a part of the tree character of the municipality. Mississauga talks about protecting and preserving significant vistas. So, there's quite a bit of latitude in terms of how a community defines its own urban forest. In the United States, there are tree protection laws in place from Pasadena, California, which protects four different categories of trees involving over 75 tree species, to our neighboring city in Newton, Massachusetts, which exempts from their law only those property owners who have lived on the property 18 months before and 90 days after the removal of a protected tree. And there are good reasons that many municipalities have adopted tree protection bylaws. They're a valuable community resource that offers environmental, social, and economic benefits, that improve our quality of life, cleaner air, for example, by providing oxygen and absorbing pollutants, or helping to keep our homes and streets cooler and providing privacy and screening. In Brookline, we also value trees on both public green spaces on our street lawns, parks, and sanctuaries, for example, and on private property, which adds beauty and texture to our landscape. And I thought those slides were, were pretty dramatic as to what happens when we lose that beauty and texture. The park's an open space division, already manages and maintains over 50,000 trees on streets and on other public lands. Within a period of 10 years, we will have created two parks in Brookline, Skyline Park and Fisher Hill Reservoir Park, which is quite extraordinary. So, we have a commitment to protecting open space and, and preserving our own, protecting our own community urban forest. Since the 2003 Moderators Committee report, language has been added to Section 5.09 of the town's design review guidelines to consider preservation of trees and landscape in review of all projects requiring design review. Although that doesn't completely address the broader issue of preserving the town's urban forest, the 10 percent threshold for increasing a structural footprint in the current article means that construction would frequently trigger a review. And these reviews would mean an estimated 2,100 additional hours of staff time for the tree warden or another 1.0 full-time equivalent employee. The Advisory Committee was persuaded that the town would benefit from a tree protection bylaw, but felt that the proposed bylaw in Article 11 required further study, including and beyond financial considerations. For example, the petitioner placed this article in the warrant after the property next door to his home was clear-cut, with all the trees removed by the developer. However, as written, there could be some unanticipated consequences. For example, according to the procedures specified within the bylaw, an owner of a property would submit a proposed--
30 seconds.
Thank you. For tree removal and mitigation to the building commissioner, along with the application for demolition or building permit, theoretically, it would be possible for a person to remove trees prior to filing for a demolition or building permit. So, the bylaw might actually encourage the removal of trees. Originally, the Advisory Committee voted to refer the subject to the zoning bylaw committee for further evaluation. However, since this warrant article is not originally filed as a zoning bylaw, that committee suggested that referral to a Selectmen's Committee with guiding language was more appropriate. The Advisory Committee, Advisory Committee counters and unanimously recommends the following motion, voted to refer the subject matter of Article 11 to the Selectmen for appointment of a committee.
Well, it's spelled out in, on page--
And it's spelled out in your combined reports, if you read them. Please support the Advisory, Advisory Committee's recommendation for referral.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. And Mr. Cook, would you come forward, please, and sit in the front row? You're on, Mr. Carroll.
Hi, I'm Frank Carroll, Precinct 10. Although I'm a tree enthusiast, I, I really exercise, urge caution in pursuit of the aims of the, of the proposed study committee. This is a kind of a topic we kind of, we're easily drawn into. We love the trees. Janice Khan made a kind of wonderful statement about, about the trees that we have, the way we value them. We are concerned when, when we see valued trees cut down. Again, we see how, how easy it is with people who are, with chainsaws, how quickly they can demolish a valued tree. And so, it's our impulse to protect the tree. But I really want to sort of caution you on, in pursuing this matter of attempting to, to advance the urban forest through imposing regulations on private property owners. As, as, as the, the analysis of this proposal showed, that it would be substantial expense to the town to have staff that would get involved in, in all of the instances in which people proposed to cut the trees. It would also aggravate property owners who, who want to do something with their, with their properties that would require the sacrifice of a valued tree. My concern is that essentially, it would be more trouble than it's worth. I would call to your attention that one thing that we have going in our favor is that this is an area in which we have trees grow. The natural condition is for this area to be forested. Many of us live in neighborhoods which at one time were barren of trees, but over time, the trees grew, and, and now the trees provide a nice complement to the, to, to the built environment. It's also the case that we, that, that architects now understand the importance of landscaping and developing properties. So, it's their inclination is part of design of buildings to include landscaping. So, we have a lot of public sentiment that puts us in the direction of maintaining trees wherever possible. And so, we kind of, and planting trees to replace those that are removed. So, we have a lot of momentum to do this without regulation. I would call to your attention the fact that we're, we're going to have this summer the opening of the new Fisher Hill Park. In the, in the construction of that park, one of the things that has been reported to us is that all of the trees on the property were removed. It turned out that all of the trees that were growing there were invasive species. So, you have some areas where there are trees that are growing, and, and people who have expertise in this area remove them and replace them with more appropriate, appropriate trees. So, I would just suggest to you a real caution in, in proceeding on this. Yes, we, we value our urban forests. We want to advance it. But let's be very careful about trying to achieve that through regulation.
Thank you, Ms. Daley.
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends favorable action on the motion to refer this subject matter to a Selectmen's Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Moynihan. Okay, Mr. White.
George Abbott White, whoop. Who doesn't have any sound?
Uh, George Abbott White.
There we go. All right. Precinct 9. I couldn't, not Ms. Daley, but I couldn't disagree more with the previous comments. I hate to put it this way. The trees need our protection. If you walk down Beale Street, past the Kennedy House, that canopy of trees there, we're looking at 100 years of growth. In my neighborhood alone, in my corner, Winchester and Coolidge, which is a construction site of three houses, without asking anybody, you know, the trees were just whacked down. My point is this. I, I support this entirely. I'd like it to go much further. I'd like to know what teeth there are in it so that developers, who don't have any sense in the Brookline community, of which these trees are a big part of it, developers would not just think twice, they couldn't make a move without first inventorying a site, making that inventory available to the building or the planning department, and then being held accountable for any changes they make. I've had a couple of neighbors come to me just in the last week where they were promised by a developer, you know, spare that tree, and it was, and, and it was whacked down-- by a developer, you know, spare that tree, and it was, and it was whacked down in a day. So as I say, I think the trees are, we call this the good community, and I think trees help to make it that, and help that goodness. And I think, I think we have a special role to see that that is attended to. Thank you.
Mr. Hock Lightner?
Mr. Moderator, Brian Hock Lightner, Precinct six. I thought that Mr. White was going to say something about the Lorax there. Anyway, I have a question, which is that it was stated in the combined reports and then repeated by Ms. Khan that street trees are already protected. And I took a look at the state statute, and it actually kind of goes to what Mr. White was saying, that the maximum fine for cutting down a street tree is $500. And I actually don't think that protects street trees. And I guess my question is, will the motion to refer allow the committee to look into protecting street trees? And then also, kind of to pick up on what Mr. White said, the teeth here, I think, in the proposed warrant article, which also provided for a maximum fine of $500, is far too toothless. And I have experience working in New York City parks. We passed a bill, an arbicide bill, we called it, and it had a maximum fine of $10,000 for cutting down a tree, which if you think about it, and how long trees take to grow to that size, is much more appropriate, and especially when you're dealing with development where a developer might look at paying a $500 fine as the cost of doing business and not think twice about it.
Can Town Council tell us whether the state law with respect to the protection of street trees is preemptive or not?
Jocelyn Murphy, Town Council. I believe that the town is free to adopt legislation that would exceed the current state statute, which I believe is found in Chapter 87.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Madison.
Hugh Madison, Precinct five, and Chair of the Tree Planting Committee. This is a very complex issue. It was brought up a number of years ago, and we found there were complexities, and it's back again. The problem has been increasing, especially in the southern area of Brookline. There's a stormwater management plan that has been enacted, I think in 2006 or thereabouts, which offers some potential for modification. And as I said, it's been an increasing problem, and it's time to do something about it. That's exactly why we have a, we're proposing a Study Committee to look at all these issues. So I urge support.
Thank you. On the motion to refer, on page 11 dash 10, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by a majority vote. I will entertain a motion to adjourn Town Meeting until 7 o'clock next Tuesday evening at May 31. Is there such a motion? And is there a second? All in favor of adjourning to next Tuesday, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. Town Meeting is adjourned until 7 o'clock, May 31. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.